We will resume our meeting. Thank you so much, everyone. So Ms. Saunders, we have Representative Parker who has a question or a comment. Representative Parker.
Thank you, Dr. Anwar. Thank you, Lisa, for being here. It's nice to see you this evening. I want to say we're so sorry for your loss and what you've endured, you and your family, and just I want to thank you for how you've used that to follow your advocacy in so many different places in over these years. I know you've been such an important advocate in Connecticut in work as previously happened here. And of course, we're building on that work this year and elsewhere. So I want to thank you for that. And it was been great for me to learn from all that you shared over these last couple of months. So I guess my question is just to ask if, in terms of the policy that we're looking at, and I also want to say thank you for sharing the numbers, right? So if you look at birth rate and incidences, potentially thirty-six babies having lifelong impacts from CMV born in Connecticut each year. And from my understanding about how the current screening in Connecticut only captures about half of those at birth with a hearing loss, that's that's more than fifteen babies each year that are going unscreened and uncaught because of this and then having to live with those impacts in their families. So is there anything else that you want to share about why you think that that universal screening is such an important piece? What you've seen from other states, things that we've learned from other states and the barriers that they've had to cross to make that happen? I just know you're so plugged in nationally to what's going on. So help us understand where Connecticut can fit into that if we can take this step here.
Well, I mean, it's exciting that Connecticut, first of all, was the second state to even pass a CMV law. So that was big, but I was sad, obviously, when prevention education didn't pass. So that's why when in New York, now that I live here and they they ended up getting at least giving out flyers. I thought, okay, that didn't cost anything or much. They didn't seem to act like there was a fee. Now, in regard to universal testing, since Minnesota, once Minnesota made that a law, then that just opens the floodgates. And now that blood spots are more sensitive, I'm not an expert on that. You would need to speak to a doctor, really. But now that they've they've decided that doing a blood spot test on the heel, you know, when they prick the baby, that is a lot cheaper than doing a separate urine test. So that was a much tougher cell, you know, to ask that every baby have the urine test or saliva test. The saliva and urine is where they would test it. But anyway, I think now that you have the ability to do that, that would be great. And then people would realize how prevalent it really is. Because some of why doctors don't tell women about it is because they don't realize how common it is. Because a lot of children grow up and they gee, they're starting to show learning disabilities and nobody knows why. Nobody knows why they can't do this or why they're starting to lose their hearing test, you know? Because unless you really push, it's hard to go back and say, okay, I want you to test that dried blood spot from years ago. Because some places don't always keep that information. And in the older days, I can't speak enough about it, though, about how accurate the blood dried blood spot was. But now apparently it's gotten better.
Thanks for sharing that, Lisa. You have from a conversation I had with a physician in Minnesota who helped lead that passage of that law. The blood spot is a standard and they can actually take a whole punch out of the dried spot that they already collect and then use that to test for CMV specifically. I am not a physician or any of these medical titles we've been discussing all day, so forgive me if I'm off on that, but that's my understanding. And then just maybe lastly, in terms of the educational side, in terms of the law that was passed in New York, can you just clarify that a bit more specifically about, because as you pointed out, that what we know, the bill as proposed in Connecticut is just is the status quo. So if we're going to do some work on the education side, what would you request? What would you suggest or request specifically that Connecticut does?
All right, if it was the perfect world, there would be an education campaign, you know? Because really fifty percent of women get pregnant unintentionally, according to the CDC. So it's ideal if they know beforehand, but since that costs forty thousand dollars a year to do an awareness campaign, okay, then at least if you're telling childcare providers who are at increased risk, like make it required that they volunteers and providers know about it because they're not probably not pregnant yet, but they're probably in their childbearing years. So if they know about it and then it becomes a thing that they're putting posters up in daycare centers, then parents in the childcare that use the childcare center will learn about CMV. And then, of course, it's ideal if an OB-GYN or somebody who does the prenatal care gives the woman at her first prenatal visit information on CMV, so they can not share cups with their toddlers and that kind of thing. So that's ideal. The cheapest way is just a flyer, because in New York, we couldn't get them to pass where they would put it in their training and their daycare training or for OB-GYNs to agree to discuss it at the first prenatal visit. But they got to, they got everybody to agree that they would give a flyer created by the Department of Health. And the CDC already has flyers in Spanish and English. And apparently minority communities are at higher risk. And when I was at a daycare event, my Spanish flyers were going a lot faster than my English flyers from the CDC.
Thanks for sharing that, Lisa. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. I just wanted to thank you for testifying with us today and then speaking to us. And I'm so sorry for your loss. We do have, no, if you're not done yet, I'm just making a little comment. I just wanted to say thank you so much. And Representative Ryan has a question or a comment.
Yes, Ms. Saunders, it's good to see you again. It's been a while, though we've communicated, obviously, with emails over the last couple of months. I know you're a big advocate when you were here in Connecticut in two thousand and fifteen and New York benefits from your presence there by being able to advocate in this issue there as well. And I actually, Representative Parker asked quite a few of the questions I was going to ask, but I just can't help but ask one is, is there, do you have any data to demonstrate how the two thousand and fifteen law might have affected CMV in this state? And any indication of how the educational component could actually have changed that number to be a greater number? Do you have any kind of statistics or issues on that, either here or in New York?
I don't know. I mean, I hear you heard from two Connecticut families today who were tested, whose babies were tested immediately for CMV. So that is an advantage of the targeted testing law that passed. So they are getting treated with that antiviral, which when my daughter was born, they didn't, I wasn't offered that. It was just kind of being experimented on. A doctor who posted her letter of testimony online for this bill has been treating children with this for over thirty years. So anyway, if you could even, I can't say if what we could have done with prevention education because reports show the efficacy is seventy-five percent. If you're telling a woman about it, now she's going to be careful. So I just can't say what the figures would be. And as far as the number of extra children picked up in Connecticut, I guess that's a question for the Department of Health or whoever keeps that data. In New York, I was told by a doctor that they're seeing, they passed a targeted testing, just like our CMV law, they passed it in twenty eighteen, actually without parents crying and begging for it, because legislator read it, read the two thousand and sixteen New York Times article. And so she just said, something's got to be done. So she got targeted testing passed and one doctor I spoke to said they've seen a lot more babies in New York because of the targeted testing. So that now babies are being tested immediately for CMV if they fail the hearing screen. But as you've heard today, that misses like half, half the children that are going to lose their hearing, you're missing them because they don't start losing their hearing till later. I don't know if that answered your question.
Does help. Thank you very much. And again, thank you for your advocacy and your continued fight on this issue. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Ryan, you good? Thank you. With that, Representative McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Lisa, you disappeared from the screen.
I did?
Oh, there you are. See you again. And I just wanted to recognize and thank you for your many, many years of advocacy. And could you just say, do you think that an education awareness campaign is really, at this point, the best way to really address this virus?
Well, put it this way, you know, there was big education campaigns on COVID. And one thing that I just thought was interesting is that in Minnesota, where they test every baby, their cases of cytomegalovirus went way down from one to two hundred to one to one thousand, just being born with it, never mind having permanent disabilities. Just showing how all these hygienic precautions now made a big difference in that. I don't know if you need a campaign. Like I said, the bill, the education piece failed to pass because I, we, I asked for a campaign, which was going to cost forty thousand a year. So I don't know what to say because I don't want the bill to fail because somebody doesn't want to spend that money. Now, I don't know about you, you must, some of you must know how expensive these children are. Once they're born and you're talking cochlear implants, I mean, my, my daughter didn't, they didn't have all that when she was little. But it was very expensive to educate her and constant trips to the hospital and spinal fusion surgery, hip surgery. All these things were, you know, she was definitely way over a million dollars, much more than that. But anyway, I guess you guys have to decide if you're willing to spend money on a campaign and how many, I think if you save one baby from being born like that, certainly you need to educate childcare providers because they need to decide if they want to work with children. They, in Australia, for example, they move you to kids over two and you can ask for that, you know, that you want to work with children over two. You kind of need to at least tell childcare providers about it so they can talk to the Department of Health and their doctors to see what is their risk. They might want to get their antibodies tested to decide, well, I've already had it, you know, maybe it's not such a big deal. Or I'm going to be super careful about washing my hands every time I pick up toys or whatever.
Thank you for that. And I do know that you're focused on the congenital virus. And is there, there are other perinatal sigla, megalovirus as well?
I'm sorry, what, what are you asking me?
Are there different types of this virus that impact at children at different stages as well?
Cytomegalovirus?
Yes.
I mean, there are different strains of it. That's why a woman can't, just because she's had antibodies for it, she can't be confident she won't catch another strain. But I heard that the likelihood of there being damage to the fetus is much reduced. But cytomegalovirus is just its own virus.
But children at different stages.
Oh, once they're born, supposedly, as long as they have a normal immune system, once they're born and they catch it, contract it, that shouldn't harm them at all. They usually think it's, you know, you know, it's just when the woman's pregnant and it's a developing fetus. It doesn't always cross the placenta. I forget the percentage. But anyway, that's when, you know, it's, it doesn't harm babies, you know, I guess maybe unless they're premature or something. But it's not something that harms babies once you're born. And that's why a lot of toddlers are excreting it and you don't even know that they're sick because it's called a silent virus. They can excrete it for up to a couple of years and they're acting fine. But I see women sharing cups with their, their own toddlers all the time. I see people cleaning up toys and then grabbing an apple without washing their hands. And people, according to studies, most childcare providers don't know about CMV and a lot of them admit to using diaper wipes to clean up, even though there's infection control in place in licensed childcare centers. But a lot of people sneak and use diaper wipes to wipe up, wipe saliva off their hands and that doesn't kill CMV. You need to use the regular old soap and water or hand sanitizer.
Thank you very much for that additional information. And just so the committee knows, I still have your book.
Thank you very much. I appreciated your email.
Thank you so much for your testimony and we truly appreciate you and I'm so sorry for your loss. And then thank you for educating all of us and the public around this. We will be working on this bill and to see if we can get some good things out during the, during this session at least. So thank you, Ms. Saunders.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Mr. Christopher Bartels. Welcome. I know you were here earlier today in the morning and in the afternoon, so we're so sorry that we could not have you speak during that time, but you're welcome now.
Well, today is my wife's birthday, so I decided it was best for my own health and safety to come home for dinner. So I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you from home. Chairman Anwar McCarthy, distinguished members of the Public Health Committee, my name is Christopher Bartels. I'm a practicing certified registered nurse anesthesiologist, owner of Connecticut Anesthesia Professionals and member of both the Connecticut Association of Nurse Anesthetists and the American Association of Nurse Anesthesiology. I am testifying in opposition to Senate Bill ten sixteen. I would like to clarify, our profession is not seeking a name change. Our profession has been utilizing the nurse anesthesiology term for, for some time in parts of the country. Just recently, it has been nationally recognized. So I cannot support this bill as it seeks to restrict the use of this provider descriptor anesthesiologist solely to physicians licensed in Connecticut. In American society, many professions utilize the suffixologist to denote experts in a field of study. The list is enormous, greater than six hundred and not exclusive to physicians. CRNA's are educated to be and practice as experts in the field of anesthesiology. Therefore, the term nurse anesthesiologist is consistent, clarifying and appropriate to describe a CRNA. Actually, as I sat and typed this testimony, some people have talked about definitions, but in Microsoft Word, it gives you options for the proper spelling of the word with the definition of that word. So I specifically mistyped anesthesiologist. And when I, Microsoft Word gave the definition of what an anesthesiologist would, was, it says, an anesthetist. And vice versa, when I misspelled anesthetist, it came up with the word definition anesthesiologist. The physician national group, American Society of Anesthesiologists, began using the descriptor physician anesthesiologist. The usage of this term infers that there are other types of anesthesiologists, nurse, dental, veterinarian, and the anesthesiologist is a neutral term. Their decision came after they commissioned public relations firms to promote the role of the physician in anesthesiology care. Speaking to a different section of the spell, my company, Connecticut Anesthesia Professionals, is a small anesthesia company, currently providing anesthesia and sedation services at nine facilities, including licensed surgery centers and physician offices through the state of Connecticut. I introduce myself to every patient I interact with and tell them exactly who I am and what I do. A public act in two thousand and eleven, number eleven thirty-two, was already enacted requiring badges for healthcare providers in certain settings, while badges in hospitals or licensed surgery centers makes complete sense. I'm not sure if this is expanding on that and there is some uncertainty what it's adding on. I am unapologetically proud CRNA, nurse anesthetist and a nurse anesthesiologist. At the end of the day, does my patient really care about which title I use? What they really want is a qualified anesthesia provider who will keep them safe and comfortable for their procedure. And quite often, if I do introduce myself as a nurse anesthetist, they'll say, oh, so you're the anesthesiologist? And I say, no, I'm a nurse anesthesiologist. And if I'm working with a physician anesthesiologist, I'll tell them the physician is physician anesthesiologist is the person you met before. Thank you for the time and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Representative Zupkus has a question or a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Chris. I'm glad you made it home for your wife's birthday dinner. Thank you for being here today. You know, a lot has been said about confusion. And as someone earlier said, we shouldn't get lost in the titles, just take care of the patients. And to me, that sounds very logical. But as far as confusion goes, do you believe it is less confusing to say I'm a nurse, an anesthesiologist nurse, an anesthesiologist doctor? Or I'm an anesthesiologist, anestheticianist, an ophthalmologist, opt, all of these different terms? What do you think is the most less confusing way?
I, I will say, while this has not become a national thing till recently to use this term, I know of people who have been using it for longer than fifteen years in different parts of the country and it's just gained steam and that had its proponents even within our own profession. But once you see it being used, and for full disclosure, Representative Zupkus is my representative. And she was asking me about this bill and you said anesthetician, which is not really a thing. And then it was a nestis. And I said, can you say anesthesiologist? Yes, well, I'm a nurse anesthesiologist. It is a different training than physician anesthesiologist and I don't want to misrepresent that. Hence why the physicians are using the term physician anesthesiologist. Patients understand that instantly and it, it takes away from the confusion.
I would agree with you. So thank you. Thank you for being here and testifying and happy birthday to Marie.
Thank you.
Seeing other questions or comments? Oh, there is one. Sorry, Representative Dauphine, I missed you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, sitting way down here by myself. And thank you for your testimony. Is it, can, can you verify that all of these different titles perform the procedure of anesthetizing a patient? So that be it whether it's, it's in veterinary medicine or surgical or ophthalmology or whatever it is, there's that, that's what they're doing and that's what they were trained to do. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did not have a question, but now I do have a question. Are you doing veterinary anesthesia too? You just, you just said that.
No, I thought she said, can you verify, I thought the question was, can you verify that someone's trained in that discipline? I'm sorry if I.
Sorry, I was just trying to clarify the act of anesthetizing someone for surgery, for surgery, whether it, what, the word anesthetize or anesthesiology is all to do the, if you will, that, that same procedure is to that of anesthetizing a patient, whether it's for the patients with, from an ophthalmologist or OB-GYN or whatever it is, surgical or whatever it is. And I threw in veterinarian because there's those that do animals as well. But I guess I meant that they do that procedure of anesthetizing the patient for whatever procedure they're going to have for that purpose. Did that clarify that?
And I would agree with that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, we appreciate you for staying with us all day and hope you are able to have a good celebration of your wife's birthday.
Thank you to all of you for your dedication.
And next on our list is Jason Prevalge. Welcome, Mr. Prevalge, and thank you for your patience with us. Welcome. Good to see you again.
Thank you so much. Great to see you as well. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you this evening. I am Jason Prevalge. For those of you whom I have not met, I'm from Fairfield and I practice emergency medicine as a physician assistant in Waterbury. I represent the Connecticut Academy of Physician Associates, also known as CONAPA. And I've submitted written testimony on two bills today, Senate Bills ten sixteen and ten seventy-seven. I would just highlight several of the points to not take too much of your time this evening. For Senate Bill ten sixteen, the truth in advertising bill, CONAPA stands opposed to this bill. As PAs, we're in complete agreement that transparency in medicine is crucial, including among other things, by whom a patient is being cared for by. And reading the language, though, it seems very unclear as to what problem this bill is working to solve. A quick internet search does not find any evidence of a widespread misrepresentation problem in Connecticut. As I point out in my written testimony, there is title protection already in the various licensing provisions in statute. As well, this bill only speaks to professions. CONAPA has worked for years with this committee to reduce administrative burdens that don't protect patients and add time and cost to the healthcare system. We had a proposed bill this year to bring forth more burden reductions that this committee unfortunately did not raise to have conversation on, but then raised this bill, which will most certainly do the opposite of what we seek by adding further burden to Connecticut's healthcare system. For example, badges would need to be replaced yearly at a significant time and financial expense to reflect expiring license dates for most professions. Also, requirements about posting providers and hours in the undefined term office is unclear as to how that would pertain to a hospital setting where we provide coverage twenty-four hours a day, every day of the year. This bill is unclear in several aspects as to what it will solve and how it will do so. Regarding Senate Bill ten seventy-seven, which would investigate how to have larger acceptance of Medicaid, CONAPA fully supports efforts that increase access to care for our most vulnerable populations. However, there are many providers of various professions that do not accept Medicaid and this workforce should not be limited to physicians as we continue to struggle with various healthcare crises in this state, such as mental health. Additionally, Section two of this bill provides protection to physicians only, which is an unequal protection that should be expanded to other provider groups that care for Medicaid patients. I thank all of you for your time and commitment to the health of Connecticut's patients. CONAPA is more than willing to work with this committee and other stakeholders to advance the health of our fellow citizens.
Thank you so much. You are like, within two minutes, I love it, Jason, organized and efficient with your communication. Do you mind if I clarify something? I think what I heard was that you're opposing ten sixteen because an internet search did not give you an answer that there was a problem. So you said, well, we'll just now taking a position to oppose it because of the internet search. Is that how you're approaching this?
No, no, not at all. I mean, really, it's the burdens that we see in there is problematic. I was just adding in one extra example of, you know, why this, this doesn't work and what is it trying to solve? But when we have, you know, burdens in there such as replacing these licenses or these IDs rather, you know, as I have here, clearly states I'm a PA. You know, I don't know much about these, but I believe that there are FIDs, they are key to everything in the hospital, to the HR, to, you know, access to, you know, doors, rooms, et cetera. I don't know how much they cost, but I can't imagine it's cheap. And for the thousands of, you know, badge wearers in the state, it's going to be a significant cost and time expense to replace these, simply to note when a license expires. As well, like I mentioned about the, the posting of hours and who's working throughout the hospital, it's just really not clear how that should be done for those of us that aren't in an office setting. And office is not made clear in the bill to be outpatient. So no, it's certainly not based on just an internet search. There are other factors that are certainly far more problematic, I think, than simply that I couldn't find any information.
You started your testimony by stating that you agree with title protection and you agree with everybody who is, has a certain level of training that they get recognized for that. But then you said that you don't support the bill that is actually going to do that. So I'm trying to break that down a little bit to have for a better understanding for myself.
Sure. I mean, what I said was actually that I, we agree with the transparency in healthcare. Transparency is crucial. Transparency across the spectrum of healthcare, whether it be how much something is going to cost, how to access a service, who is caring for a patient, all those things need to be transparent. And there's, there's no question about that, you know, we're, we're not posing a fight here for what anyone has called. You know, we agree transparency is key. But as I mentioned, there are also already title protections in statute. And so what are, we're just not clear what is happening with this bill that is going to be different from the title protections that are already listed in several different areas of statute that I have listed specifically in my written testimony.
Okay, so now I get it because you, you think that existing laws may have potentially covered this and that's why you're against it, but you're, you're in favor of transparency in, in healthcare, correct?
Absolutely. Correct.
Then, but if it is, let's say in the. Then, but if it is, let's say in the past, the bills were not good enough and this bill is providing some of that uh, improvement on the existing bills, then you would be supportive of 1016. In other words, the concepts are not something that you're against.
That is correct. Yes, absolutely. Transparency, holding everyone accountable, absolutely important. Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for your help. Representative, uh, Kristen McCarthy, he has a question or a comment followed by Senator Gordon.
Jason, I just wanted to say thank you. Uh, I look forward to talking with you more in Fairfield and about these and other issues. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Gordon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Prevalge. Uh, thank you for your testimony, both, uh, uh, verbal and written. I did read through the written testimony and thank you for the work you do as a physician and associate and what your colleagues do. I've worked with, uh, PAs for many, many years and they are a valuable part of the healthcare team in many settings. So, uh, thank you. Uh, one question I have through you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is to clarify testimony uh, relative to, uh, Bill 1077 about, uh, Medicaid. Um, are you, or is CONAPA opposed to the idea being proposed in section two of 1077 or just looking more to be included uh, as part of the healthcare professionals in section two, uh, if, if I may ask you that through the chair?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for, for that question. Um, no, to your, your point, yes, um, we agree in theory with, with the idea there. Um, it's just, I think exclusive, excluding other professions that should be included as well. Um, from APRNs to PAs, also mental health providers, anyone that's taking care of a Medicaid patient. Um, having protections there for a single profession really is just, you know, unequal protection and expanding that further would be what we would like to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, Jason, always good to see you. We should get, get together and chat more. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And, uh, next on our list is, uh, um, Michael Rig. Welcome, Mr. Rig.
Good evening. Um, uh, my name's Michael Rig. I'm, um, an, a licensed attorney and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Connecticut-
Uh, so sorry, can I, can I, uh, I may have missed somebody in, in, in there who was sitting here. So sorry about that. Apologize for that. Sorry, uh, Terry Williams, I got a message that you're not here. So sorry. Welcome. And you've been here all day. Good evening. So sorry.
Senator Anwar and the Public Health Committee, thank you so much for holding down the fort today. My name's Terry Williams. I've been a lifelong Connecticut resident. I'm a practicing certified registered nurse anesthetist. I'm associate professor at Central Connecticut State University and the Doctor of Nurse Anesthesia Practice Program. And I'm president-elect of Connecticut Association of Nurse Anesthetists. I'm testifying in opposition to Senate Bill 1016. As you've heard today and through my testimony that's written, you can read. Um, we know that the term anesthesiologist looks at the, the specialty and science of anesthesia. What I want to say is that an anesthesiologist isn't licensed as an anesthesiologist. He is licensed as a physician. His physician license, he can work as an anesthesiologist, he or she can work as an anesthesiologist because of the medical licensing. That medical licensing is extremely important, that degree. Some anesthesiologists are not board certified. Every certified registered nurse anesthetist in the United States is board certified. So while that descriptor should be used by physicians and have a title description of physician or nurse anesthesiologist or other fields as other people have mentioned today. I want to explain the education and training that a nurse anesthetist requires in the United States. Our programs are accredited by the Council on Accreditation and there's 124 programs in the United States. Minimum entry requirements are a bachelor's degree, critical care nursing experience. Most nurses do not go right out of college into nursing. So they spend many years as a nurse on a floor before going to a critical care unit where they have to have a minimum of one year. Additional requirements, as you heard Dr. Morabber, Nancy Morabber, who's a, um, faculty at Fairfield University speak, requires the uh, practice doctoral degree for entry into practice and it can be a doctor of nurse anesthesia practice or nursing, doctor of nursing practice. Those standards and the academic hours while are very different than what a physician anesthesiologist or any physician has have significant hours. And I'd like to just report those, um, overall. So anatomy physio, advanced anatomy physiology and pathophysiology is 120 hours, principles of nurse anesthesia practice, 120, advanced pharmacology, 90, research, 75, advanced physical he- health assessment, 45. So those are academic course hours, not study hours. In addition, the clinical requirements are 2,000 clinical hours and 600 clinical, clinical cases. While that is, um, when I, we had a master's degree program, our students were getting 2,500 clinical hours in about 800 cases. Students in our program now are getting about a thousand cases and over 3,000 clinical hours. Again, that is clinical hours. That is not, um, clinical case preparation. Once these graduates meet those minimum requirements, they take a national certification exam. It's a standardized exam. It's costing a thousand dollars to take. Passing that exam allows them to become licensed as advanced practice nurses in Connecticut. I do take offense to the term mid-level provider that's been used here. I never practiced to the middle of my capability, nor does any advanced practice provider. That is the top of my life training and I'm very proud of the efforts I have and I'm at my three minutes.
Um, please finish what you're saying.
So in, in short, I think that, um, it's important that patients understand who I am and what I do. I have had many patients when I'm caring for them say to me, oh, like a nurse anesthesiologist. I've never described myself as a nurse anesthesiologist. I've described exactly what I do. I will also refer you to Governor Lamont's, uh, 20, 2019 CCSU class incest commencement posted on YouTube. At one hour, 11 minutes and 40 seconds, he turned to the, our speaker, the first doctor of nurse anesthesia practice graduate from Central Connecticut State University and turned and said, oh, you mean like nurse anesthesiologist? So that is what our governor heard, even though she clearly said nurse anesthetist. He's, he interpreted what she said in those terms.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Representative Dauphine has a question or a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your testimony. I think you did a good job of describing your clinical requirements. Did you tell us how long you've been a nurse?
I graduated from the University of Connecticut in 1986 and it's late, so I don't do quick math, but over 35 years. I've been a CRNA for over 20. I was a nurse for about 15 years became before I came to nursing.
Thank you for that. And have you ever in all of your career heard a nurse be, um, refer to herself as a physician?
No. I have heard physicians though call me a nurse as a nurse anestis.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Representative Denny. Representative Denny. Sorry.
Thank you for your testimony and waiting here all day. Uh, I think you do, did a great job of representing of what our profession does. Um, I think the main discussion point that we're having here is does saying anesthesiologists with a physician in front of it diminish the physician's role when you say nurse ahead of anesthesiologists? And don't you think that physician gives them the dignity and respect that they deserve when they say physician anesthesiologist? That doesn't take away by calling nurse anesthesiologist?
Absolutely. And I would never, I always tell my patients that we work as part of a care team and the physician anesthesiologist that you'll meet later today is.
Thank you for your testimony and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Seeing no questions or comments. We appreciate you being here throughout the day. Thank you. Thank you. Now, Mr. Michael Rig, I apologize, uh, uh, for the little mix up. Welcome.
Thank you very much. No problem at all. Um, well, again, my name's Michael Rig. I, um, I'm an attorney licensed in Connecticut and I'm, uh, here speaking on behalf of the Connecticut Society of Eye Physicians, the Connecticut Dermatology and Dermatologic Surgery Society, the ENT Society and the Connecticut Urology Society. Um, and I'm here to speak in support of Senate Bill, uh, 1077. And in particular, um, uh, that bill is, um, I'm sorry, entitled an act concerning the acceptance by physicians of patients who are Medicaid recipients. Um, I think this is a, an important bill, a first step at least, um, to addressing the problem of, um, expanding, um, services to, uh, recipients of Medicaid. Um, at least, uh, section one at least, um, sets up a committee that would explore, um, how to, um, expand those services. But section two is the portion of the, the proposed bill I'd like to speak the most about. And that is it provides, um, immunity or a qualified immunity to those physicians who uh, agreed to treat, um, Medicaid recipients. And that, uh, places that this, this bill, if it were to become law, would, would put, uh, physicians, uh, in the same category as attorneys who agree to take on, uh, low income, um, clients, um, when they're, uh, appointed by a court or, uh, public defenders who represent indigent defendants in cases. Where those attorneys who represent, um, uh, individuals who can't afford a representation in say, a, um, uh, child custody matter, uh, such as a guardian ad litem. And so, um, by doing that, that will, um, I think make it more attractive to a larger pool of physicians to agree to take on Medicaid patients. And it'll also help, um, reduce the cost of medical malpractice premiums that physicians have to pay. If, um, at least some of the, um, types of cases that they take on would provide a level of, uh, immunity to the physicians. Um, and this is a, a particular demographic that, you know, tends to produce a higher amount of malpractice lawsuits than, um, other demographics within society. It's also consistent with what, um, is provided at the federal level to, um, federal clinics who receive federal money under the federal system. If there's, um, a malpractice claim, it can't be brought against the individuals of the clinic. It can only be brought against, uh, the US government. And so they enjoy, um, a similar type of, of immunity that section-
Mr. Riggs, your time is up. Thank you.
And my time's up. Thank you very much. I'm available to answer any questions.
Uh, Senator Gordon has a question or a comment, Mr. Rig?
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Rig, thank you for your, uh, your testimony. If I may ask a question to, uh, uh, or more than one real quickly to, uh, to clarify, uh, your testimony. Uh, one clarification, if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, you were mentioning that there are, um, attorneys who do get liability protection if, for certain work they do. But also federal clinics or clinics that receive federal money or funding also get, uh, such a, uh, liability, um, uh, protection. And so if I can just get a clarification from you, if you can, uh, uh, just let me know just within a brief timeframe. Uh, what is, is those protections similar to what's being proposed in section two? That is, there's already a precedent. Uh, and that section two of this bill 1077 is not creating something brand new magically out of the air, but there's already precedent. Uh, and this would be extending that, uh, to, for example, physicians who agree to see people who are enrolled in, uh, Medicaid.
Yeah. So actually section two is a little more modest, um, because section two doesn't, uh, provide protection from say gross negligence. Whereas the, um, the state statutes that I was referring to with respect to, um, and I, I'm singling out private attorneys. I'm talking about lawyers that um, are not state employees, but they, they agree to take on a case, you, a, a court appointment. And so, um, they're immune, um, they enjoy qualified immunity and that can only be overcome by conduct that is reckless or intentional. So this is actually a little bit more modest than, than what, um, is provided to lawyers. Um, and then with respect to the federal, uh, law that I was talking about, there's no liability at all. Uh, however, um, there is an ability for the patient to recover, at least in a limited way, against the government. What happens is the government stands in the shoes of the, uh, healthcare clinics. Um, if they get sued and the case gets transferred to federal court. And there's, um, there's no jury trial, but they can recover some money, uh, against the federal government under a theory of negligence. Um, but, uh, um, so, so that's the, I, I think that answers your question or I hope it does, uh, as to, you know, this isn't, um, just something being made up entirely for physicians. No.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, real quickly, uh, through you, ask a follow-up question. I'm not a lawyer. Uh, but my understanding is there is a difference between gross negligence and what sometimes gets termed as quote unquote, ordinary, uh, negligence, meaning gross negligence or in, in section two, it talks about willful or wanton misconduct. Other people call it indifference, recklessness. That's a different category of, uh, of negligence as opposed to failure to take a prudent, prudent precaution to try to prevent or mitigate a potential risk. Uh, though, there, there are two different categories if I'm, if I'm understanding the law. And section two, uh, if a physician, uh, under this section two does something grossly negligent, they're not given that liability in this section two of this bill. Is that correct? That's a different or a worse category of negligence, for lack of a better term?
Yes. So it would be, um, negligence that's obvious. Um, it would be the kind of negligence that, um, it, it wouldn't necessarily even require, uh, the assistance of an expert to educate the jury as to whether they're, you know, the, the physician's kind was, was, was a breach of the standard of care. It would have to be really obvious negligence.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me ask the questions and, and thank you, uh, Attorney Rig for, uh, the great answers. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Representative Zupkus has a question or a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good evening. Thank you for coming. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying and what this bill is trying to do. Um, I have insurance and literally in December was diagnosed in good faith with something that was going to cause me to go through extremely major surgery. And by the grace of God, I found another doctor and they did their research and to come out that it was a miss, complete mistake. Now, if it would have happened to me and I would have gone through the surgery, I honestly don't know if I would have ever found out it was a mistake or not. But I would sue. Now, is this saying that if somebody is on Medicaid and the same thing happened to that person and they went through the surgery, they could not sue the doctor? Is that what this is saying?
Well, it would be the, the, the standard that they would have to satisfy would be that of gross negligence as opposed to, uh, I think what was mentioned before, ordinary negligence or an ordinary breach of the professional standard of care in, um, so and that would be, um, only with respect to Medicaid patients, uh, those, or, you know, those uh, patients who the physician agrees to provide healthcare to presumably at a much, at a dramatically reduced rate.
Which I find extremely concerning because everything we do in this building, we talk about the poor and the black and brown community, and that's where these people fall on. So this bill to me is saying that people with certain insurance are going to get treated differently than people that are not on great insurance. And so I have a major problem with that, number one. Number two, I think the whole Medicaid, doctors don't take Medicaid patients because of rates. And that's a whole nother discussion that really needs to be talked about because I think that's where the problem is. But, uh, thank you for clarifying that.
I, um, okay, I, um, I would, I would just point out that that is the current law with respect to lawyers.
Representative Carpieno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I agree with Representative Zupkus. I, I appreciate the intent of this working group, but I don't think it's any secret. Um, the barriers for Medicaid patients finding physicians are twofold. Um, and I beg anyone to tell me differently. It's the, the amount of money our physicians are paid by either rates and it's the fact that we have a- and it's the fact that we have a lack of providers in our state. I think it comes down to that, but I'll be honest. This is beyond troubling to me. I don't understand, in the world of equity in the Public Health Committee, why would we wanting to have a dichotomy? Why would we be wanting to set up two separate systems of justice for folks depending on their income level? Can you explain to me how in the world where different allegations of negligence often aren't established until trial, how this would even work? Through you, Mr. Chairman?
I believe, I assume the question's directed to me. So, so the, it would be the same way that it would occur, you know, with respect to, let's say, somebody wanted to bring a claim against a lawyer who they thought didn't properly represent them. The, you know, the obvious purpose of the statutes that provide the immunity to attorneys is to to create an incentive so that they will take on that type of representation at a much reduced rate. It's, the purpose is to expand the legal services to indigent clients. And so the same rationale would apply here with respect to trying to make providing, taking on Medicaid patients more attractive to a broader range of physicians and specialists by providing the exact same protection that exists for attorneys.
While, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, while I I appreciate that you have a position on this, that is one that I disagree with wholeheartedly as an attorney myself who took pro bono cases prior to arriving here as a state rep. My clients, regardless of whether they were through my private employer or a pro bono client, still demanded the same level of representation. And I can't see any way that this would benefit a patient. I actually find this harmful to our system. I actually find it disturbing as an attorney that this would even be proposed to give us potentially a second-rate medical diagnosis or treatment to a patient. And with every bit of my being, I could never support this. I appreciate you trying to walk me through this in the event that I had misunderstand, but it doesn't seem that there is any misunderstanding on my part. I thank you for your answer, and I thank you for your time, sir.
Representative Reddington Hughes?
Hey, I'm just trying, oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to circle back and clarify something that was said earlier, that there seemed to be a disproportionate amount of lawsuits among the Medicaid patients. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, there's, there's insurance carriers have looked at risk when they decide how to set rates for liability policies. And so, yes, they're, within the insurance industry, they have identified certain demographics, certain situations where there is a greater risk of suit.
Well, thank you.
Representative Gordon, sorry, Senator Gordon?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be very, very quick, and I appreciate you letting me ask another question. I'm mindful of the time. Attorney Riggs, you had mentioned about in the federal or clinics that take federal money, there is this type of protection, actually, more so than what is being proposed in this bill. If I got that correctly, has there been any evidence that healthcare professionals, including doctors, nurses, anybody who falls under those liability protections have been or are providing any lesser level of quality care? I'm assuming if that were to be the case, the federal government would have looked into it and changed the system. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, and the answer is no. And if there's a concern about, you know, two-tier systems, then I guess the UConn Health Center should be abolished because the doctors there enjoy immunity. Okay, so they can't be sued. What does happen is the state of Connecticut can be sued in their place, in the place of the physicians. So if there's a lack of comfort level with section two, well, then instead make it so that the physicians under this proposed bill would be treated the same exact way as the physicians, say, who are employed by the University of Connecticut Health Center. Because they enjoy immunity from suit. And as I mentioned before, so are numerous private attorneys who enjoy immunity from suit as well.
Senator Gordon, you're done?
If I just may, just one quick follow-up, Mr. Chairman, thank you for indulging me. So Attorney Riggs, you're saying, and that's helpful for me to understand as I'm trying to understand section two, that UConn Health, the individual doctors can't be sued, but there still could be a lawsuit against UConn Health itself. That isn't negated. That can still happen as far as, in a sense, you're suing the state, so to speak. You're suing UConn Health, for lack of a better term. So right now, as it exists, there is already this system in place. Is that what you're saying? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so what can be done is simply the law that immunizes the physicians and other healthcare providers at UConn Health can simply be adding on physicians who accept Medicaid patients, and they would it would be the same exact system that would apply to them as applies to the physicians at UConn Health and, and like I said, private attorneys who fall under the same protection. So that there would be an ability to sue, but it would not be against the individual. It would be against the state of Connecticut, who, just like in the federal system that I mentioned, they stand in the shoes of the practitioner who's alleged to be negligent. But the individuals themselves are not sued, and they're not liable for the damages. But that's a much more absolute, I mean, it's a stronger immunity that exists, and the money would be paid by the state of Connecticut. But that's an alternative if there's a concern that there would be no ability to sue. If there was a desire for there to be an ability to sue, then the law can simply be changed so that those physicians providing services to Medicaid recipients would get the same exact protection as attorneys and UConn physicians.
Senator Gordon, you're good?
Just one quick follow-up, and I'm done, I promise, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Has there been any evidence with the system that's in place at UConn Health that it has incentivized or caused any lesser quality or quantity of care to be provided to people? I'm assuming if that were the case, the state would have stepped in or UConn Health leadership would have stepped in to make certain that quality of care is upheld. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, the quality of care is there at UConn as it is at other institutions.
Thank you, Senator Gordon. Attorney Riggs, I have some questions, and these are very basic qualifying questions, so bear with me. If I'm a patient who has private insurance and I go to UConn and there is a physician who treats me with gross negligence, you're saying that I cannot sue that physician?
That's right.
But I have a private insurance. I'm not Medicaid.
That doesn't matter. Right, right now, so what would happen is you cannot sue the individual doctor. You could sue the state of Connecticut, or I guess UConn, but it's really the state of Connecticut. And what happens is you can file the lawsuit. There are some restrictions on, you know, the way it is as compared with, say, a private defendant. Like, for example, there isn't a jury trial. And there is certain interest that is not allowed to be awarded in the case as well.
Okay, I'm going to do another scenario, if you would allow me. Go to a federally qualified healthcare center in the state of Connecticut. And it's not UConn, it's FQHC. And at that FQHC, when I go, I, again, private insurance, even though it's taking Medicaid and other Medicare and so on, but I'm going to go with private insurance, and there's gross negligence. And can I sue the physician there?
No, you can't. Whether you would qualify for services at the federal clinic or not with private insurance, I'm not sure about that. But your insurance status doesn't, it would be the same. You cannot sue the individual physicians or even the clinic. It would be, again, against the US government. The case would be transferred to federal court. There would be no jury trial, and there are some other limitations on the case that you can break.
And now, you made a comment that if, I'm now a lawyer, I'm changing roles. I'm smart now, right? So I'm a lawyer and I'm trying to do some pro bono cases. But I then mess up another cash case, if you will. I don't know what the term is. And I make gross negligence. Can I be sued by that person because I did something wrong?
No, it would be similar to a UConn physician, right? So let's say you were appointed by a court to represent someone. You can't be sued for that individually. They, you could try to bring a claim against the state of Connecticut for that.
My question, I want to make sure. I'm a private lawyer. I'm not employed by UConn or federally qualified health, and I'm a private lawyer. And every year I take two pro bono cases.
Right, okay, if you just decide on your own to take a pro bono case, it doesn't involve being appointed by a court to do that, where you're compensated by, you know, the court system at a reduced rate, you're just doing it voluntarily. Well, then, in that circumstance, there wouldn't be any legal protection against that. You could be sued for that.
Okay, but if a court-appointed pro bono case, then it's a different story?
Yes. Yeah, because you've been, you've agreed and you've been appointed by a court under circumstances. For example, you're appointed to represent somebody in a criminal case. Then you're then you receive immunity. You can't be sued for gross negligence. The plaintiff could try to, it's not that clear, to be honest, based on the case law, whether or not they could sue at all. But they could try to sue the state of Connecticut for your representation.
Even if it's outside of that specific case that gross negligence happened?
You can't, right, you can't sue the individual attorney. You can't do that, that's for sure. The only, the only way to defeat the immunity that currently exists for the court-appointed attorneys is if the behavior was reckless.
So how did the lawyers get into this? And right now, we actually, in the state of Connecticut, we are forty-seventh to be able to keep the physicians in the country. And all the physicians are leaving to other states which are, which have less malpractice insurance. And now you cannot get a urologist, gastroenterologist, not enough cardiologist, so it's like a mess, so. And I think, is the malpractice insurance going to decrease if this happens?
If, I mean, if there's, you know, some type of protection, then absolutely it would decrease. And if, like, for example, if we, if this bill were to be changed to make, you know, physicians who treat Medicaid patients the same as court-appointed attorneys or UConn physicians, that would dramatically reduce premiums because the insurance companies wouldn't wouldn't have to pay anything, not even for your defense. Because, you see, you have to understand, when the, let's say, the court-appointed lawyer who gets, they try to sue, he can't, he's not, he's not named personally in it, so it's the state of Connecticut, so it's the the attorneys for the state of Connecticut who defend the case. So there's, there's no there's no cost at all to the individual who's the subject of the negligence claim.
So the, are trial lawyers in the same situation, too?
Well, the, you know, the statute that provides the protection that I've been referring to, it applies to, you know, attorneys who typically go to court and represent individuals in court, so they would be trial lawyers. You know, so it's those types of cases or representation that's covered by the statute. The particular statute I'm referring to, by the way, is four dash one forty-one of the general statutes. And so that's the statute that designates certain attorneys and other individuals as state officers or employees for purposes of immunity.
I may have more questions. I'm just sort of somewhat shocked, so I will relax for a second while my co-chair asks a question.
Thank you, Attorney Riggs. So I just want to go back to something that you just said a moment ago and see if I understand this correctly because my understanding is that you're telling us that the folks who have immunity are all people who are either employed by the state or federal government. Is that correct?
Well, they definitely have it, but it wouldn't be limited to those people.
So you're suggesting that, and just to make sure I understand this, the people that you've talked about so far are people who either work at UConn, which is their state employees.
Right.
Doctors, but they work at UConn. If an attorney is appointed by the state and paid by the state, that attorney would have immunity. If an attorney or a doctor is working at a federal, if a doctor is working at a federally qualified health center, then they have immunity as a federal government employee, and the suit would go against either the state or the federal government, right?
Yes, so far, yep, you got it.
Now, which category am I missing of people who have immunity who are not employees of either the state or federal government?
Well, the people who work at those federal clinics are not federal employees. And the private lawyers who accept court appointments to represent individuals are not employees. They don't get a W-2. They're not, they're not employees of the state of Connecticut. They're private lawyers who, they have, they have other cases. They represent people where they get paid their regular market rates. And so there's no immunity for those individuals for, in those cases. But in the cases where they accept a court appointment, even though it's a private lawyer, they are protected in the same way that a state employee would be. It's, what the General Assembly has done is it has sort of designated certain individuals who really aren't employees as having the same protection as state employees. You know, for certain types of of conduct. So, you know, and there's also people, like, they work for the state bar examining committee. Those are all private lawyers, or almost all of them, who work on that committee. Well, they get legal protection. They get, they get immunity somebody were to sue them for, you know, the work that they do. But they're not employees.
They're not employees, but the state has actually appointed them, and they've accepted that appointment. So thank you. I think I understand what you're saying. I'm a new member of the Public Health Committee this year. It's wonderful. This issue certainly seems to be a judiciary committee kind of conversation as we get into some of the legality of it. I think it's as we get into some of the legality of it. Um, I think it's, it's relevant here in the conversation because we are talking about doctors and that makes sense, but I also, as we talk about this, I, I'm sure that our colleagues in the Judiciary Committee would have something to say, but this has been um, an interesting conversation and I thank you for hanging in here with us and taking the time with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Gordon has another question and I have some too, but we'll start with Senator Gordon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Attorney Riggs, I'm sorry to ask questions, but I just want to make certain that I'm understanding some of the ins and outs as best as I can. Um, I know I asked you a question about that, those who fall under immunity, uh, so to speak, at Yukon Health or a federally qualified health clinic or a clinic that otherwise gets federal money, that there's been no evidence, uh, of lesser quality of care or quantity of care. Um, let me ask that question relative to when you talked about, uh, liability immunity given to, uh, lawyers. And you've talked about, uh, you know, about that. Has it been adding evidence for them that there is any lesser uh, quality of legal service or advocacy, um, that they provide? Whether they're given this liability or not given this liability? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right. No, and, and I mean, the, the standard of care that lawyers and doctors have to adhere to doesn't change based upon whether you can be sued. Uh, you still have, you know, your professional standard of care that you have to adhere to and there's obviously, um, uh, oversight by the state bar and by the Department of Public Health as to, to physicians. It's a question of, um, you're protecting against, um, lawsuits in order to make it more attractive, um, to, to, uh, to work in certain areas. And so that's clearly, I think, you know, over, over the years, that's, you know, that, um, list of individuals who received immunity has been added on to over the years. Um, and, um, like I said, it's, it's, uh, they've, they've added on a number of different types of attorneys. Um, you know, who are, who are engaging in, in a function that would be, you know, relevant to, to the public's interest. And I certainly agree, you know, I happen to agree with the immunity that's been extended by these statutes to uh, certain types of attorneys because they are fulfilling a, a public function, a public interest. But I, um, it seems to me that what physicians do is, is highly relevant to the public's, to a public interest. And, um, and, and ensuring that, um, less wealthy patients have access to, you know, certain kinds of specialists in particular. Um, when they're Medicaid patients, um, I think is, is important and it seems to me this will be one way to make it more attractive, um, for, um, some of the physicians to take on Medicaid patients.
Thank you, Senator Gordon. Um, Mr. Riggs, I'm gonna ask, uh, another few questions. So for, for benefit of everybody else, could you tell us what the IMTALA law is? E M T A L A law? That's like physician sort of knows about that law?
Yeah, so it's, it's a very relevant to this discussion when IMTALA is a federal law that imposes upon hospitals an obligation to treat, um, all patients who arrive in their emergency department. And they have to provide kind of the same level of care that they would provide to any other patient, um, even if it's an individual who doesn't have any insurance or any ability to pay. So, so the, the, the law is designed to prevent hospitals from discriminating against um, people who, who can't pay, who, who don't have, um, uh, insurance or any other ability to, to pay, uh, for the, what could be expensive medical treatment that becomes necessary based upon an evaluation in the emergency department. And so at that moment, because the law imposes this obligation on hospitals and the hospitals have to fulfill that by having, uh, physicians on call and, and in an emergency department to provide that medical care, um, that's, um, you know, was one of the, the main burdens on the American healthcare system that I think at least partially led to the, the passage of the Affordable Care Act that sought to expand, um, Medicaid coverage so that more and more people would, would at least have some kind of health insurance.
So, so I'm, I'm gonna think aloud with you and then you can tell me if I'm on the wrong path. So I- IMTALA requires that anybody who is coming to the emergency room, no matter how sick they are and no matter how well they are, they are going to be provided care irrespective of what their insurance is and, and majority of them may be Medicaid patient at that time. So every physician in the emergency room or if God forbid they're critically ill, anybody who's taking care of them, then they're critically ill in the intensive care unit, you're providing them every possible care that you can to help them out. And, uh, and that's a federally mandated requirement, but it's a human mandated requirement. It's a good bill. It's, it's a, it's how we should function as a country. Um, and, but if, if that is a requirement and you're taking care of those individuals, um, and those are the cases where the lawsuit risks are very higher, uh, very high. So that's one segment. The other segment is the cost of, um, of malpractice insurance is very high. If, I, I wrote an op-ed recently about the, the loss of OB-GYN across the state of Connecticut. Many of the OB-GYN doctors who have left the state, they have left not because of any other reason except majority of them have been because the cost of malpractice is so high in the state that they can't practice here. And then when the hospitals cannot provide care, they have to shut down these units because there's no safety, because there's no coverage available. And that's something that people have not necessarily talked about. And then, and, and trying to figure out this malpractice piece, um, this is worthy of, uh, of reading more and, and looking at this more. Can you reflect on what I'm saying?
Yeah, so like, um, there are, i- in one area where physicians can save a lot of money on malpractice premiums is by not agreeing to, to be on call for, uh, um, emergency calls. So, for example, an orthopedic surgeon, if they don't take call and they limit their practice, then they would qualify where they typically, they can get lower insurance premiums because, um, you know, it's the, the cases that come through the emergency department that tend to be the more complicated, the more difficult cases. And statistically, it's much more likely that those cases will result in a medical malpractice lawsuit. So, um, insurance carriers, um, will offer certain types of physicians better rates, um, if they don't, uh, treat those kinds of patients. And that's difficult for hospitals because they need to have, um, physicians of various different specialties who are going to be available and on call for an emergency case. So, you know, IMTALA, um, I mean, I, I often hear people say healthcare ought to be a right. Um, but at least under IMTALA, in, in the circumstance of going to an emergency room, it is a right. Because if, if a hospital were not to follow IMTALA, they can be sued for that, uh, under federal law. So it's, it's an obligation that's there, um, but it's produced enormous financial difficulties. Um, and, um, uh, so that's another area because we're, we're talking again about people who, you know, they still, they can't afford the healthcare and, and so frequently people, they don't have health insurance, so they use the emergency department as their primary care physicians.
Thank you, Attorney Rig. I, I was, uh, part of me was looking forward to getting some rest tonight after the end of this, uh, public hearing. Now with all this conversation, I'll be thinking all night. So thank you for your testimony. This is, uh, very interesting and, and, uh, thank you, Senator Gordon, for your effort and, and, and the questions. Um, it's, oh, Representative Claritas Dieter has a question or a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that you submitted your testimony. I didn't see it online. Thank you.
Um, I actually, I haven't put together written testimony, but I absolutely can. And I will.
We would love to see it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Seeing questions or comments, we want to thank you for your testimony. We appreciate you, uh, Mr. Riggs.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, um, uh, John Flanders. Thank you, Mr. Flanders. Welcome. Sorry for, we had you wait. Welcome. You're muted, sir.
Thank you, Senator, and I promise to be as boring as I possibly can so that you can get some rest tonight. Uh, good evening, Senator Anwar, uh, Representative McCarthy Vardy, ranking member Summers and Clarities Dieter, uh, members of the committee, Representative Carpino. My name is John Flanders and I'm here to speak, uh, in favor of Senate Bill eleven sixty-one. I am here wearing two hats. I serve as the advocacy chair for the Connecticut Association of School-Based Health Centers and also the vice president of Special Education Equity for Kids of Connecticut. Uh, in both these roles, we work for the children in schools in Connecticut and understand that the resources that make it possible for them to have to be healthy and have access to good mental health services are inadequate. This bill that provides funding for the schools recommended by the School-Based Health Center Expansion Working Group last year, uh, is providing much-needed funds and we unreservedly support that move. Uh, we do, of course, have an, a caveat, and that is simply that while these schools are absolutely deserving of this, there are hundreds of schools in the state that do not have access to onsite medical and mental health care, and we believe that they should. Simply put, we are hoping that you will consider expanding this and allowing any school within the state who wants to add a school-based medical health, school-based, uh, health center or expand the hours or the services available in the center have the same opportunity to apply for, uh, on an RFP to receive funding, uh, to expand or, uh, add in their services. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Flanders. It looks like you're gonna get off pretty easy tonight.
It's the shortest testimony that I've ever given any for you guys and, uh, I'm glad to get away with the unscathed.
We're, we're thankful for your advocacy and your ongoing work for the young people of our state. Very much.
Thank you, Representative.
Next, I believe we have Betsy Gara. Ms. Gara, you seem to always draw the high numbers. I, it feels like that at least over the past couple of years. It's nice to see you here in public health. Welcome and please proceed.
Thank you, Representative McCarthy Veyhe. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Gara and I'm the executive director of the Connecticut Waterworks Association and I'm here today to comment on House Bill six seven three two, which requires inspections for lead paint and lead in the water at nursery schools and preschools. Uh, Connecticut's public water companies are committed to providing residents and businesses with safe, high-quality water at a reasonable cost. And to this end, our water utilities are working tirelessly to fully comply with stringent state and federal water quality standards. And this is good news because we do regularly test for lead and notify customers if there is an exceedance and then promptly treat that exceedance. Um, we do, however, support the goal of House Bill six seven three two to protect children from exposure to lead in drinking water. As the State Department of Public Health indicated in submitted testimony, there are state laws, um, already in place that ensure that lead in water is tested, that we test for lead in drinking water, particularly, um, in the childcare facilities and schools. And so I, I do want to just make sure that if you do move forward with legislation, that the definitions and requirements um, are consistent with both the state laws on the books as well as the federal laws. The water industry now is embarking on efforts to comply with the leading copper rule revisions on the federal level. This is a comprehensive undertaking that is going to involve preparing an inventory of homes and businesses that may have lead service lines from the curb stop into the home, um, a- as well as com- uh, plumbing components, lead solder, et cetera, that may pose a risk. And so we're gonna hear, be hearing a lot more about that in the upcoming years. But we do want to make sure that you understand our commitment to fully complying with those and, um, we hope that this will continue our commitment to protecting Connecticut's high-quality water supplies. Thank you.
Betsy, thank you for staying with us all night, um, and through the day to be able to talk about this issue, one which we have not really talked about today. When I hear your testimony, what I hear is, and, and what the Department of Public Health is saying is that we do have laws on the books. Would it be your opinion that this would be redundant in some way, or is it simply that you're asking if we do move forward, that we be consistent?
I do think, and I'm only speaking with respect to the, uh, water supplies, but with respect to the water supplies, it would be redundant in as much as the, they're already testing requirements and notification requirements under state law. And in addition, under the federal lead-in cap rule revisions, it's not the Department of Public Health that will have to determine whether or not there are lead service lines or lead components within the facility. It's actually the public water supplier that serves that facility will have to make that determination. If it's, has its own water supply, then the childcare facility will have to make that determination. Uh, and, uh, but it is, yes, I do believe that it is redundant, um, to move forward with it in its current form.
Thank you for answering that question, Ms. Gara. Oh, Representatives Upkiss and I apparently had the same question, so I appreciate that. Are there any other questions, comments? Betsy, thank you so much and I hope you have a great rest of your evening.
You too. Thank you.
Next is, I believe, is Angelo Ziotis. Welcome. Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, good evening. Chairs, Dr. Anwar, Representative McCarthy Veyhe, ranking members Summers and Clarities Dieter and members of the committee. Um, I am Angelo Ziotis. I'm an attorney and a partner at a Stanford law firm, Silver Gollum and Title. I live in New Canaan and thank you so much for allowing me to testify in this manner, in this manner. Obviously, it allowed me to spend all day with you and, and, and get home a little earlier than you all will. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Connecticut Trial Lawyers Association to testify in opposition to Section Two of Raised Bill ten seventy-seven. I was the president of C T L A in two thousand and fourteen and my firm has had three presidents of the organization in the past eighteen years. I bring up that timeframe because two thousand and five, eighteen years ago, was when the legislature amended Connecticut law to provide for special protections for Connecticut healthcare providers. Protections that no other class of citizens have. Those changes were the result of years of negotiations and struck a balance between victims of medical malpractice and healthcare providers. Our position simply stated is that broad immunity from legal liability is bad public policy. In this instance, this bill provides blanket immunity to providers who treat Medicaid patients. This immunity would create two tiers of medical care in Connecticut. Where low-income children, pregnant women, the disabled and other vulnerable citizens would receive a lower standard of care than that received by wealthier Connecticut residents. That is frankly appalling. Um, I've testified against immunity proposals in the past, but have never seen one that so directly attempts to take away legal rights from poor people. As a lawyer who's represented disabled persons who need care, many of whom have Medicaid coverage, as a Connecticut citizen with relatives with disabilities, I want you to do all you can to increase the availability of this care. However, I urge you to resist doing so by further victimizing the most vulnerable amongst us by creating immunities that prevent those injured by negligent medical care from receiving justice. That proposal would be self-defeating for this body. If you create this kind of immunity and citizens can't get justice, these patients end up on Medicaid forever. So it ends up costing the state more. But more importantly, I urge you to eliminate Section 2 of this raised bill because it's the right thing to do. Now, I cut out a few moments of my testimony, and I would have been remiss to not address the manner in which Attorney Riggs' testimony was misleading, particularly in response to Senator Gordon's questions in a couple of respects. First, any claim that Medicaid patients bring claims more than others is just patently ridiculous and offensive. The last numbers that I saw from 2022 were that nearly a quarter of Connecticut residents are on Medicaid.
Excuse me, Mr. Zioda, but your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Obviously, I'd be happy to answer any questions and complete the couple of areas that I thought the prior testimony was misleading, but thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you. I appreciate your testimony today. I have a couple of questions for you. You referenced a 2005 change to Connecticut law that provides special protections for medical providers. Can you speak, we're gonna limit our exchanges to five minutes each at this point, so I have a few questions for you, so if you could be as direct as possible in the answer. So could you tell me which medical providers and what immunity that was in 2005, please?
It's not immunity, Representative, and I want to make it very clear. What it was, was a bill that requires a certificate of merit where a similar healthcare provider has to sign a letter before we can start a lawsuit. No other class of citizens in Connecticut has the right that a healthcare provider does to ensure that a similar provider reviews the case for merit before we file suit.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, can you point us to the data points that you were starting to reference about those Medicaid recipients who, and their rate of suing or not suing? Is there a place where we can go to look at some data on that?
Yeah, the numbers that I was looking at were that the published data for Husky was there was over 900,000 Connecticut residents on Husky in 2022. There's about 3.6 million residents in Connecticut, so I just did the math. But from my perspective, I just think that that's too big a number of people to make generalizations like Mr. Riggs was attempting to make. There are lots of reasons that you can argue that care could be less good. There's a larger minority population on Medicaid that studies show don't get as good care. So there's lots of reasons why Medicaid patients may be represented in a way that's different, but it's just too big a number to make that kind of blanket statement that he made. It was offensive.
I have one more question for you. I forgot to set the timer on myself, so I'm gonna let myself to this last question, which is, in the previous testimony which you heard, we heard that attorneys have immunity for certain clients in particular. I'm going to set to the side and would ask that you as well, those who are employees of the state government, which is a different issue, and any employees of the federal government, can you speak to that issue?
I can, and it was an incredibly misleading answer. The Connecticut law that Mr. Riggs cited provides a very limited way that some private lawyers are treated like government lawyers. And that's why, Sheriff, that it's hard to put it completely aside. There are lots of governmental immunities, governmental immunities that we object to and we testify against as they're debated in your body in other committees. But there is a very small number in cases where the court has decided the government lawyers can't do all of the court-appointed functions to represent children in divorces. We are not talking about a quarter of the people in the legal system. We're talking about a very, very small number of situations that a Connecticut law many years ago said we're going to allow for lawyers who are not government employees to be treated like government employees. That's not what we're talking about here. Here, we'd be talking about taking a quarter of the Connecticut population and taking away their legal right to get into the courthouse. It's unprecedented, using Senator Gordon's words.
I appreciate your answers to the question, and I think there are some other attorneys in the room, and perhaps we could also get a statutory reference to that section of the law. I'm looking out to the folks who are in the audience here, and if not afterwards, so.
If not afterwards, I'm happy to come up to Hartford next time for this. That was surprising testimony.
Thank you so much. We have questions from Senator Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be respectful of the time. I just have a couple of questions. Attorneys, thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it, and I did read the written testimony by the Connecticut trial lawyers. You made a bold statement saying about a lower standard of care relative to if immunity were to be given. And in fact, it also is in the written testimony here about not wanting to expose Medicaid patients to negligent medical care as incentive to healthcare providers, quote, end quote. Do you or the organization have data to show that anyone who already has any type of liability immunity, be it whatever status there is for UConn health physicians or anything through the federal system or federally funded clinics, that there is actually a lower standard of care because of any liability protection that they have? I'm actually asking if you are aware of, and if so, can you present to us at some point the actual data about that? Thank you, Madam Chair, through you.
Thank you, Senator. The bill as written allows doctors to provide negligent care and not be sued. That was the basis for the testimony. And the UConn and federal examples are completely in opposite, where you're not taking away a client's ability to recover fully. You are merely changing who is sued. And in a number of hospital systems throughout Connecticut, including those in the Hartford area that I know you're very familiar with, there are large health systems that are taking over, and those entities are the ones that get sued in cases against them, not individual doctors. That's not immunity. That's a shifting of who's ultimately responsible.
And if I just may follow up, thank you for that answer, but it didn't actually answer my question. But my question is, are you aware of, and can you provide us data, that anyone who has any liability protection, for example, at the state level or in the federal level, I'm interested in knowing this for my own edification, that there is an actual cause and effect for a lower standard of care? You stated it in your testimony, and it's also in written testimony about an incentive to negligent care. I asked the question again. If you don't have the answer, that's okay. I'm just interested, you know, in what that answer might be. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, again, Senator, I apologize. I'm just disagreeing with the way you're describing what immunities are. I think that the standard of care in Connecticut is quite good, and I'd like to keep it that way.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just take it that there's no answer that could be provided to my question or not being willing to be given. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Next question's from Representative Reddington Hughes.
Hi. My, thank you, Madam Chair. My question has to do with, I had asked before about, you know, why this procedure had been put into place to begin with, with the immunity? And the answer was really that the Medicare or Medicaid patients were more apt to sue. That was the question, that was the answer that I received. Upon further examination, though, I find that it seems that Medicare and Medicaid patients do not sue disproportionately more than the general population. Is that true?
That's certainly my understanding, Representative. I don't have any basis to say that they sue, but more. But again, it would be impossible to do that kind of statistical analysis when you're talking about that large a number of people. It really, it just felt like a line that was given with no backup whatsoever.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Reddington Hughes. Senator Anwar.
Thank you so much. Attorneys, thank you for being here with us today. I was just looking at your website. You take pride in suing physicians in the state of Connecticut, and you take pride in the amount of money that you are able to get through the trials. So I take some of your words also with a little bit of a grain of salt. My challenge is that the physician in the state of Connecticut are leaving our state. We are now number 47 in keeping our physicians in our state, and we obviously have more room to lose and can be the last. But right now, we already have parts of the rural state of our, rural parts of our state. There is no women's health available because the OBGYNs have left. At what point, is there a red line that you will say that, look, we have done enough to the physician community in the state, and after this red line, we will back off a little bit? Is there, because I would like to know, and I'd like to wait for that red line that will be crossed because right now, we cannot get care with specialties in our state already.
Senator, I do take issue with the way in which you've characterized my website or practice. I would be very, very happy to, you know, describe that to differently, but my concern is that you're characterizing something that I take great pride in, which is making sure that clients who have been grievously injured are fairly compensated and describing it very, very differently. You know, the number of physicians that are leaving Connecticut is something that should concern all of us. Every person on this, at this hearing, is a consumer of medical care, has family that's a consumer of medical care. I'm very concerned about the quality and amount of medical care that's available in Connecticut. I know that as of the last time I checked, we had the fourth or fifth highest number of physicians per capita in the country. So I understand your number may be the number leaving, but I'm not sure where that statistic's coming from.
And you're, do you mind if I ask you, do you enjoy the immunity that Attorney Riggs was talking about?
No, Senator, I don't, and that's where I really do think that that was a very, very misleading road to take this committee down. There are those small number of lawyers who take court-appointed positions representing children in custody matters, not the kind of case that would be in any way analogous to a physician caring for a patient with Medicaid and exposing that patient to potentially a death or serious injury that affects the patient for the rest of their life. There's no way that those situations are analogous. But no, I know I do pro bono work, but I don't do them as a court-appointed lawyer.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments or questions, I just wanted to say, Attorneys, I notice, I think we have many physicians, we have many attorneys in the state who are trying to do their best work to help serve people, and I think the goal here at this committee is to see what we can do to assure that folks are being cared for from a public health standpoint, and I appreciate you answering our questions here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we have Kathleen Nastree, who is here with us in person. Welcome.
I am. Thank you for staying here as well. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Nastree. I am a trial lawyer, and I have been representing medical malpractice victims for my entire career. I'm also past president of the Connecticut Trial Lawyers Association and past president of the American Association for Justice, which is the national trial lawyer organization. And I'm here, like my colleague Angelo Ziotis, to testify against Section 2 of S B 1077. I have represented malpractice victims for 35 years. They come to me and they come to my colleagues after a catastrophic injury, which they believe was caused by a negligent medical care. They come looking for answers, and they come looking for justice. Many of my clients are among the most vulnerable in our society. They are poor, they are disabled, they are pregnant mothers, and they are underserved children. Many, many of them are Medicare recipients. This bill would directly impact those vulnerable and underserved segments of our society after they have suffered catastrophic injuries to themselves or losses of loved ones due to medical negligence. It would deny them recourse and close the doors of our courthouses to them. It would deny them the right to seek justice, preclude them from getting answers to difficult and complex questions raised in medical negligence claims, and it would preclude them from holding negligent providers accountable. It cannot be the intent of this committee or of the legislature at large to carve out and further punish Medicare recipients who have been injured by medical negligence. It is inconceivable that we would deny a fundamental right to an entire group of people just because their circumstances made them eligible for public assistance. This bill would not only deny them access to justice when injured by negligent, but it would immunize an entire healthcare system or group of healthcare providers from criminal and regulatory or licensure consequences. That's what Section 2 of the bill does. Think about the message that that sends to patients who are Medicare recipients. Denying access to civil justice is not the answer. If the reimbursements are so low that physicians cannot provide care, the answer is to reassess those rates and fairly compensate these physicians for doing the important work that they are doing every day. As an aside, when we resolve a medical negligence case involving a Medicaid recipient, the state of Connecticut gets paid back for the medical bills that it has paid on behalf of that recipient in addition to getting paid back for other kinds of financial assistance like overdue child support and other categories of financial assistance. So the, an unintended consequence, I think, of this bill would be a significant financial blow to the state of Connecticut because those benefits paid by the state would then not be reimbursed through the lawsuits that the Medicaid recipients are entitled to bring. With that, I think I've made my position clear. I know there are questions about Attorney Riggs' testimony and about attorney immunities. I'm happy to answer those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have a few questions. I'm gonna begin. We were talking earlier when we heard from Attorney Riggs about the difference between gross negligence and negligence in terms of what is allowable. Can you speak to that briefly again, keeping in mind the.
Yeah, it's actually, it's not really a clear standard. For a long time, there was really no such thing as gross negligence, especially in the medical negligence context. We work on a standard of care. The definition of negligence is what a reasonable provider would do under the same or similar circumstances. Gross negligence is kind of a new concept, not well-defined, but certainly a more negligent act if that's, if that's, you know, possible, but it's not a well-defined standard.
In your experience in working with your clients and in prosecuting these cases, have you found that the, that it's common or even happens at all that a physician is willfully or wantonly or purposefully engaged in some kind of negligence?
No, certainly not. Yeah, I mean, I would, certainly not. I think that answers the question.
No, I think, I think that's important. I think that's, I just wanted to get that out there. So I know Representative, actually Senator Anwar, forgive me, and then Representative Upkiss.
Thank you so much for staying with us all day.
You're very welcome.
You're probably an expert on multiple topics today.
I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot.
So have we. I wanted to ask you, in your 30-some years of practice, have you had a chance to be in a situation where there was gross negligence or major lawsuit against a University of Connecticut physician or a federally qualified healthcare center physician?
Yeah, I have been involved in cases where I represented victims, where I had claims both against the state of Connecticut for services at UConn and against the federal government for services at the VA hospital. In both cases, it was ordinary negligence, but we prosecuted them on that basis.
So in other words, that quote-unquote immunity is not really an immunity because if somebody does something wrong, they can still be sued by a good lawyer?
It got, well, so it is immunity. It goes back to the idea of sovereign, and when the king had immunity from suits by its citizens. So the state of Connecticut has sovereign immunity, which can be waived by statute, which it has done. And the federal government has sovereign immunity, which it can waive by statute, which it has done. So there's a procedure under the federal statutes called the Federal Tort Claims Act that allows people to sue under certain circumstances. There are administrative procedures and other kinds of things. Same thing for the state of Connecticut. There is an administrative procedure that permits certain kinds of lawsuits to go for, and one of those categories is suits against the health center, against the UConn health system.
So in other words, one of the fear was that if something like this was to be considered, the individuals could not be sued, but what you're saying is they could be sued?
No, they could not be sued. The way this statute is written, there would be an absolute immunity for private physicians who see, who agree to see Medicaid patients. That is a completely different system from what is now in existence under the sovereign immunity framework of the state of Connecticut and the federal government.
Okay, so.
There's no, there's no, I have to say, there's no connection between those two systems. And so when Attorney Rig was talking about uh some some scheme to ensure Medicaid providers under the the same system that the state of Connecticut uh protects its doctors, it's just, it, there's a disconnect. It's two completely different systems.
Okay, um, bu- but but that existed, let's say that if the bill was written in such a manner where it was similar to what Yukon and and FQHCs are providing, would you be more uh accepting to that?
No, you you couldn't. I don't see a system under which you could do that. That there are state of Connecticut physicians who are protected because of the sovereign immunity rules that apply to state of Connecticut employees. And there are private practitioners who choose or or choose not to see Medicaid recipients. There is no I I don't see the nexus between the two systems.
So how are the lawyers then able to get it?
The lawyers don't have immunity. Attorney Rig uh overstated is a kind way to say it, what that law is. So there's a statute. Um, and I think the the one that that
For something?
For one sixty-five says if a lawyer is appointed by uh in the judicial system, so a judge appoints a lawyer to be uh guardian ad litem for someone in a a child in a custody dispute, that a disgruntled parent uh cannot sue the GAL if they become unhappy with whatever the outcome is. And the theory behind that is in part that if they, if the state of Connecticut Judicial Department appoints a lawyer to to serve in some way that system, that that lawyer comes under some protections because they have now been appointed by the state of Connecticut. So they get some of the protections that a state of Connecticut employee would get. When I do, when my colleagues do pro bono work, when we serve underserved populations, we we don't get immunity if we do something wrong. We are, we are as vulnerable to those underserved segments of our population as we would be if I represented the CEO of United Technologies. We don't have immunities. That was a a, an incorrect statement of the law, and I think it was misleading intentionally.
Okay, thank you so much for testimony. I'd love to chat with you at some other time.
I'd be happy to talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Anwar. And I would just say, I think it's difficult to assume intent.
Um, I I agree, and I withdraw that, that
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know we're not in a court, but I I I think it's important. So Representative Zupkis to be followed by Senator Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Senator Anwar really asked my question of what I was going to ask you, but um, I'm not going to restate, but I'm sure you heard my testimony on what happened to me. And I just find it absurd that someone that is on Medicaid, and I'm not rich by any stretch of the imagination, but how they could not sue for a mistake that would change their life in in all in good intention. I mean, I'm sure the doctor that diagnosed me, he didn't do it intentionally. Um, and so I find it just really absurd. But and you may or may not can answer this question because we're really talking about how doctors can or will take more Medicaid patients. So to that question, do you have any thoughts or ideas, suggestions on how doctors, how we could, because I believe it's rates uh reimbursement, but how could we get doctors to take more Medicaid patients?
Well, I think, and I I am not critical of the the medical community for this issue, that the Medicaid rates, I mean, the Medicare rates are terrible, right? The Medicaid rates are abysmal. And I, there's, I can't fix that, but it needs to be fixed. And I completely agree that the doctors, because they're presumably they're doing the same work for the Medicaid patient as they are doing for the CEO of United Technologies who can pay. And they should be paid fairly when, no matter who the patient is that they treat. And so I think it's a rate issue. It is not a malpractice issue.
Thank you. Agree a hundred percent. Thank you. One more thing, is your testimony online?
I I did not file written, I mean, I have this written testimony, which I can, I will file.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Zupkis. Senator Gordon.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And Attorney uh Nastree, thank you for your um your testimony. It sounds like we have differences of opinion between you and Doc and Attorney Riggs regarding uh certain things. And I look forward to learning more from uh both of you to to figure out where things actually really stand. Um, so I look forward to learning more about that. Um, just two very quick questions. You said in your testimony that if this section two of this bill were to go through that it would um prevent criminal loss uh lawsuits or people being held criminally liable. Yet it only, it doesn't, it's actually not technically worded that way unless someone does gross negligence, which uh many definitions are willful, wanton, reckless, indifferent. Um, so are you saying that your opinion is, is that this would prevent all criminal um lawsuits? You did state that, so I just wanted to understand if you were referring to all of them or only in certain um uh uh situations. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you.
Thank you. The way I read section two of the bill is that it immunizes doctors from uh lawsuits, except under certain circumstances, and it also prevents or gives them immunity for criminal claims and for licensure licensure and uh regulatory issues as well. That's just the way I read section two.
Uh, and and through you, Madam Chair, to me, I read it that unless they've done gross negligence, then um they otherwise would be liable for civil and criminal liabilities, including suspension, revocation, and surrender of a license. Um, so to me, the the wording clearly does define two different scenarios and doesn't, isn't a blanket immunity. And just one thing I'm trying to clarify with different testimony from different people. Is it your testimony that the doctors at Yukon Health do not have any type of liability? That is, can they be sued if they don't commit any type of gross negligence and it would just have to be Yukon Health or the state that then gets sued? Or what is, what is your interpretation of the current status of liability protection or no liability protection for doctors at Yukon Health, for example? Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Employees of the state of Connecticut, uh, including medical providers at the Yukon Health Center have um protection under the doctrine of sovereign immunity because they work for the sovereign, they work for the state, and so they have those protections. Um, the state of Connecticut in a, in a statutory scheme has waived that protection under certain circumstances, which means the individual doctors are held accountable through this scheme where the the state of Connecticut, Yukon Health Center and its its uh branches can be subject to liability. I don't know if that answers the question.
Uh, yes, it does. And it does support a point I had prior of made. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Gordon. Representative Denning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quick question. As an employee of the state, am I granted some of that immunity as a legislator?
Yeah. Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
How's that? That's a good way to end. Thank you.
Uh, the answer is yes. And Representative Denning, I was going to ask the same question to make the point that yes, indeed, yes, the state and the federal government, it is different kinds of immunity in part because of of the work that gets done. Um, and I think this has been a very interesting conversation. I don't believe that there are any further uh conversations and questions. I thank you for staying here with us uh throughout the course of the day.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gretchen Rafa, who's with us via Zoom. Please proceed, Ms. Rafa. Welcome.
Good evening, Representative McCarthy Vehi, Senator Anwar, and honorable members of the Public Health Committee. My name is Gretchen Rafa, Vice President of Public Policy Advocacy and Organizing with Planned Parenthood of Southern New England, testifying in support of raised House Bill six eight one eight and Act Concerning Patient Access to Reproductive Healthcare, raised House Bill six eight two zero, proposed Senate Bill one seven one, and proposed House Bill five one nine seven. I've provided written testimony on all four bills and will highlight a few points here. As the state's largest provider of sexual and reproductive healthcare, including abortion to over fifty thousand patients at fourteen health centers across the state, Planned Parenthood believes that all people should have access to quality, affordable healthcare as a basic human right, regardless of who you are, where you live, your income, if you have health insurance or your immigration status. We thank the Lamont Administration and the General Assembly for taking swift action last session by responding to the urgency of the moment from the impending overturning of Roe v. Wade and passing the Reproductive Freedom Defense Act, Public Act twenty-two nineteen, with bipartisan support with some members on this committee too, from both sides of the aisle, modernizing Connecticut's abortion law and protecting patients and providers from abortion bans passed by politicians and other states. We know anti-abortion rights activists and politicians will not stop at overturning Roe and allowing states to ban abortion. They are actively working to dismantle sexual and reproductive healthcare nationwide, including by trying to end the FDA's approval of Mifepristone, one of two medications uh most commonly used in medication abortion. That's why this legislature must keep Connecticut moving forward to def- in defending reproductive freedom in our state and support bills like these four bills to protect and expand access to reproductive healthcare. House Bill six eight two oh is an important next step to the Reproductive Freedom Defense Act to ensure abortion remains accessible in our state and protects providers delivering that care. It's critical that reproductive healthcare providers have continued access to um their licensure and insurance coverage without concern about facing biased action based on the provision of reproductive healthcare. House Bill six eight one eight is critical because patients should be able to trust their healthcare providers to provide them with the best care and accurate health information without judgment. This bill provides important protections for providers that provide medically accurate, comprehensive information and counseling to patients regarding their health status and treatment options, as well as protections for providers who provide healthcare services related to pregnancy complications when refusing care would violate the standard of care. The harmful effects effects of abortion bans stretch beyond abortion care. It's now harder for people to get life-saving medical care for miscarriages, ectopic pregnancy, and other related complications. That's why this legislature must also continue to support important access bills um like House Bill five one nine seven and SB one seven one to improve access to birth control, including emergency contraception. Removing barriers for people to access contraception is an important step our state can take. We support ultimately, along with the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, supporting over-the-counter access to hormonal contraception without age restrictions. Pharmacists prescribing of contraceptives has been proven safe and effective. And lastly, I just want to remind this committee that emergency contraception is a safe and effective method of birth control already available over the counter since twenty thirteen, when the FDA approv- approved over-the-counter status. Increasing through vending
Excuse me.
I'll wrap up now. Um, increasing access through vending machines will provide more access to people who need it, including survivors of sexual assault. That's why we strongly support all four of these bills. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, good job with the timing. You've got a lot there, Gretchen. And thank you so much for all of your advocacy um and work.
Uh, are there
Thank you, Representative.
No, I, well, you know what?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair.
Oh, you know what, Senator Gordon, thank you so much for that. I did, I missed your hand. Senator Gordon, please proceed.
I'll try to make my virtual hand bigger if I can. Um, um, I just want to, uh, just a a quick comment. I just want to say thank you for the work that you do as a doctor and as a state senator. I'm aware of the work you do. So thank you for the work that gets done for Planned Parenthood. A lot of people don't realize the scope of the uh medical care uh and patient care that you provide, and it is important, especially for a lot of underserved uh people in parts of the state that don't have a lot of access per se. So I just want to say um, uh, thank you, um, you know, for that. I have asked this question uh prior of some people who have testified about the uh, the uh letting pharmacists be able to prescribe or dispense um uh uh birth control oral contraceptive. Uh, and through you, Madam Chair, I'll be quick. Um, do you feel that if this were to go through as uh other states do, that there should be a provision to have uh a woman's doctor, if she has a doctor, be informed so that way they're aware medically of what's going on in case there's anything they need to weigh in on or follow follow up on to continue or extend uh uh healthcare for uh for a woman in such a situation? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, first of all, thank you, Senator Gordon, for your comments and for your support of uh the important work that we do as a healthcare provider. Um, you know, ideally, we want everyone to be able to um access contraception. And the most important thing is that people have timely access um to contraceptive care. Um, at Planned Parenthood, we do see people for um, you know, birth control counseling and talking to people about the best option for them. Um, this is really another step uh again before hopefully someday in the future when the FDA approves over-the-counter um access of con- of hormonal uh contraception. And we think it's really important that we give people, we remove barriers and give people all of the options they can to access safe um, you know, contraceptive care. And um, we hope that people can access uh healthcare providers to have those conversations. But in fact, you know, we know that that's not true in in even in our state, that people face barriers to getting to their healthcare provider.
Thank you, Gretchen, and thank you, Senator Gordon. And we up, just looking around, very much appreciate you being, oh, Senator Summers. Please proceed, Madam.
Yes, good morning. I actually, I don't even know if it's morning. Good afternoon, good evening, Gretchen. I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Um, I just wanted to thank you for your testimony. I think it's really important um the way that you framed the last statement that this is another step in helping to provide access for women that are uh living in a contraceptive desert, that don't have access to to birth control. Um, you know, this is supported by ACOG, the people that are actually taking care of women in this situation. That's the Academy of um Obstetricians and Gynecology. Um, they actually want birth control to be over the counter, which is an FDA issue, as you spoke about. Uh, birth control is over the counter in a hundred countries overseas. If you go to France or Germany, you can just buy your birth control pills right over the counter. Um, so I think this is a a good step. I I want to make sure that um there is not this unnecessary fear associated with this move. Um, pharmacists will be trained, they are highly educated in medications, they have systems, electronic systems to get um information to a PCP should someone have it. They have the ability to do a risk assessment and a health assessment on the individual. Um, and again, this is not in any way, shape, or form to replace a primary care physician or to replace a gynecologist. This is an added measure of access for a product that has been on the market for sixty-one years and is found to be very safe and very effective. So I really appreciate the way that you framed it. I think it's very important that people understand that. So I'm sorry I didn't get to chime in earlier, but I I do appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Senator, because I think you're, you know, stating something that's very important, that a requirement for a prescription can be an obstacle for some contraceptive users and really, again, to emphasize, several studies have demonstrated that, you know, women are capable of using self-screening tools to determine their eligibility for hormonal contr- contraceptive uses. Um, yeah, so I think it's really important and um hopefully the bill will move forward.
Yeah, and the last thing I just want to add is this has been done in over twenty other states. There hasn't been adverse reactions. There hasn't been women going uh and having additional problems and showing up in ERs. What it has done is help to prevent unwanted pregnancies, which I think is something that um you know, being in in a position like that, if it gives women a choice, it's also a very powerful tool for women that are victims of domestic violence situations where they can go confidentially, have an assessment and have a conversation with a pharmacist that they feel comfortable with. And I think that's another important part uh to bring out in this conversation. So I thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Summers. Gretchen, thank you so much again. And uh, I think maybe for the third time.
Thank you. Have a good night, y'all. Thanks for being here so late.
Thank you. Uh, I, with my apologies to Amanda Levitt, who I inadvertently skipped over. It, welcome, please proceed, Madam.
Hi there. Good evening, Senator Anwar, Representative McCarthy Vehi, and all the distinguished members. Um, I've been on and off watching all day, and I must say that I am so impressed with your thoughtful questions, your dedication, and really, most of all, your stamina. It's been a long day. Uh, my name is Amanda Levitt. I'm a naturopathic physician. I've been in practice for twenty-two years. I'm a member of the Connecticut Association of Naturopathic Physicians and a member of our National Association, the American Association of Naturopathic Physicians. I'm co-owner and a clinician at our sixth provider office in Hampden. Um, in addition to clinical practice, for the past twelve years, I consult for Middlesex Hospital's Integrative Medicine Program, where I teach family practice fellows um about safely combining natural medicines with conventional treatments and uh integrative healthcare management. Um, thank you so much for this opportunity to testify today opposing uh SB one oh one six. Um, I may be inexperienced at I may be inexperienced at testifying, this is my very first time, but I'm very experienced in the practice of naturopathic medicine in Connecticut. So SB 1016, The Truth in Advertising, aims to promote transparency in the practice of medicine, and I agree that that is very important. But the way this bill is written, however, presents challenges for many healthcare providers, including naturopathic physicians. Naturopathic physicians are board-certified, licensed by the Department of Health, they carry malpractice insurance. Many practices, including mine, are credentialed providers with health insurance companies to provide access to a wide range of patients. And I'm here today just representing naturopathic physicians in private practice. I'm concerned about this bill because it could lead to the inability to use the term physician. I've been practicing as a naturopathic physician, as I said, for 22 years, and I don't think that there's ever any confusion to what kind of physician I am. Every time I see a new patient, I explain to them, I'll ask them, have you seen a naturopathic physician in the past? I briefly explain our scope of practice in the state of Connecticut, my personal philosophy about medicine, which to me is that to be holistic is to consider all options, from diet and lifestyle all the way to chemotherapy and surgery. I help my patients make informed decisions, I provide referrals as appropriate, I safely integrate natural medicines when appropriate, and I'm a big fan of collaboration with other providers. My diploma on my wall, my license that's prominently displayed from the Department of Health, and my cards, my website, all says naturopathic medicine, naturopathic physician. So I really don't think that there's any confusion about the word physician that we use and have been using for 22 years. The other piece that I'm concerned about is the ID badges. So in a small private practice, I agree with the optometrist who spoke earlier, Brian Lynch, who testified, you know, my diploma on the wall, my patients have chosen me as their provider, or they were specifically referred to me by their specialist, their PCP.
Your time is at an end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I add just one last piece?
Just one, one more line, if you could.
Sure. I was also seeing in the bill that not being able to have a preceptor would be an issue in the office. And right now, our office is a preceptor site for the Yale MedPede residents, and we also have naturopathic students that rotate through, and that's an important part of our learning.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Precisely, and for your first time testifying, you did say that, right?
I did.
Great job.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Senator Anwar.
Thank you so much for your testimony. This bill, you think, is going to impact the naturopathic physician title? Because that was another bill.
I thought that this one was going to impact it as well.
Okay, we'll look at it from that perspective. I did not anticipate that in this one. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you so much. And seeing and hearing no other comments, have a wonderful rest of your evening. Thank you. Next, we have Mark Schaper, who is here with us in person. Mr. Schaper, welcome.
Thank you. So my pleasure to be here. Good evening. Good evening, Senator Anwar, Representative McCarthy Fahy, Senator Summers, Representative Clarida Stitria, and members of the committee. The Connecticut Hospital Association appreciates the opportunity to submit testimony concerning House Bill 6740, an act concerning hospital financial policies. CHA opposes this bill. House Bill 6740 amends existing statute to extend protections for uninsured individuals to individuals who are underinsured, which is defined as any person liable for one or more hospital charges that exceed 2% of annual household income. The bill limits what hospitals are permitted to collect from such underinsured patients to the cost of providing such healthcare. And in some cases, it appears to limit collections to not more than 2% of the applicant's annual household income per year. Our objections to this bill include the following. Nearly all Connecticut hospitals go well beyond statutory obligations by extending their financial assistance policies to those who are underinsured. So the intent of this bill is largely duplicative. Hospitals' policies are based directly on the federal poverty thresholds, in all cases extending discounts to individuals and households at 400% of federal poverty level, and in some cases, higher. In contrast, this bill requires hospitals to provide substantially discounted care or to extend the terms for payment, potentially over years, for any insured individual regardless of income. By requiring hospitals to subsidize the cost of care in this way, the bill is undermining the basic expectation of health insurance products that are the foundation for individual and employer-sponsored coverage. Moreover, it encourages the sale of flawed insurance plans that don't cover basic medical need and that promote medical debt. If insurance products are routinely offered by health carriers that by design include annual deductible and out-of-pocket maximums that exceed 2% of household income, and this level of medical liability is unreasonable, the products themselves should be adjusted to fall within the parameters in this legislation. Any attempt to shift those financial obligations to another party will undermine the health insurance market and the actuarial principles on which such products are based. In addition to the above-noted concerns, there are formidable practical barriers to implementation. Hospitals would be required to collect household income information from every insured patient whenever that patient presents for care. Household income is subject to change, as is the liability to which a patient is subject at any given point in time, requiring an ongoing reassessment of liability against household income. It's not realistic to expect hospitals to track changes in income and medical liability on an ongoing basis and reconcile accruing liabilities, adjusted to cost and allowed amounts at intervals throughout a course of treatment. Finally, if the bill's focus is on the burden of medical debt, one must consider the combined costs across multiple service areas, such as pharmacy, physician services, home care, ambulance, and ambulatory surgery. The proposed bill's focus on hospital liability is overly narrow and unfairly misdirected at hospitals. In closing, we'll continue to focus on making our hospitals' financial assistance programs as easy to access and navigate as possible, raise awareness about these programs with our patients, and ensure that our staff remain well-prepared and trained to articulate these policies to our patients. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks very much for being one of the very last people here with us tonight in person. I have a couple of questions, and I know Senator Anwar does as well. Just going back to the insurance piece, could you say that again in just a slightly different way? Just to repeat and explain it a little bit differently for us, please.
Sure, so I I have an example that might, that might help. So my question is, where do I have that? If you, the example is an income example. Here it is. So on the Affordable Care Act marketplace, so in Connecticut, Access Health Connecticut, but nationally, the plans have an annual out-of-pocket maximum of about $8,000. So there's deductibles, it might be around $5,000, a total out-of-pocket maximum of $8,000. The proposed policy would limit the annual out-of-pocket obligation. So anybody who signs up for an insurance product through a small, through their employer or through the exchange, where with a household income, for example, of $110,000 for a family of four, would be limited in terms of what they could pay the hospital to $2,200. So it basically takes a product that's sold on certain terms into which employers and individuals are paying, or through the Affordable Care Act, and it basically sets those terms and parameters, which were the basis for the design of the insurance product, aside. And it says to hospitals that it's your responsibility to take an insurance product that leaves people with too much medical debt and to remedy that. What you see on the exchange nationally is that there are cost-sharing subsidies that are used to basically reduce the annual out-of-pocket costs for individuals who sign up for exchange products, adjusted to income. So in that situation, you have an insurance product for which the government helps with the cost sharing in order to make it a product that doesn't drive you into medical debt. It's that kind of thoughtful approach to designing insurance products that don't result in an undue liability that I was speaking to.
No, and I'm just aware of time, because I have just a couple more quick questions. And that, I think, was very helpful to explain your point in a slightly different way. Earlier, many hours ago, Dr. Giffords was here talking about a uniform application, the idea of having a uniform application. And when she testified, she said OHS does not necessarily have the resources to address that. Is that something that you would oppose?
I think we would be open to discussion about approaches that we could use to ensure the accessibility goals that are, I think, that are part of the intent of the statute.
Okay, great. And last question for me is, so again, earlier, and I don't know if you were able to hear Dr. Gifford's testimony, but she talked about the pilot expansion of the definition of underinsured. What do you think about that?
Well, two things. We're I think that the way that there, I don't think that this is a workable underinsurance definition. Hospitals have a definition that's tied to federal poverty level, which is typical and means-tested policies. And they've been implementing these financial assistance policies based on federal poverty level thresholds routinely for many, many years. So this other approach, it's not clear why we would test it. And any test, it would seem to me ought to be undertaken in light of the fact that we shouldn't be, again, interfering or disrupting or enabling certain, you know, flawed insurance products to continue to be sold. That is something that remains very much top of mind for us.
Thank you so much, Madam Co-Chair. Thank you, Mark, for being here. Good to see you here again. I, you mentioned that all the hospitals that you represent, the Connecticut Hospital Association, you started by saying all the hospitals care about the medical debt and some of that component. About two, three years ago, there were pretty bad reports out of at least one healthcare system in part of our state, where they were taking the future earnings of the patients. So their paychecks were like $0.02 or $5 or something. And I know when it made the newspapers, it really raised the awareness of the rest of the state that medical debt and how some of the hospitals approach the patients is very different from hospital system to hospital system. So I think, I mean, respectfully disagree with the statement all. I would say some of them do, not all of them are that part. And I think the intent of the bill is to be able to have some component. I would just say that, is there a possibility to sit down with the proponents of this bill and Connecticut Hospital Association and find some common ground?
We would be open to discussion.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And the description you were giving, when you were giving the description about the cost, I said, I wish we had this conversation early in the morning. Right now, I am unable to understand beyond three variables. So, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Anwar. That's why I asked him to explain it in a different way. No, I think it's always helpful. I don't see any other comments or questions at this point. I want to thank you again for staying here with us and for your willingness to continue the conversation, as Senator Anwar indicated.
It's my pleasure, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you, and that is our pleasure. We next have, let's see, Betsy Jet. Welcome, please proceed.
Hi, I'm Betsy Jet, Senior Vice President of the Connecticut Blood Center and its parent organization, the New York Blood Center. We're a nonprofit providing blood products and services to over 500 hospitals. Some of the hospitals we serve in Connecticut include Hartford Healthcare, Yale, New Haven Health System, Middlesex Hospital, and Day Kimball Hospital. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak in support with modifications on House Bill 6836, an act concerning blood plasma donation. In paragraph A1, we recommend adding language explaining that blood center collection methods may include both whole blood lobotomy and automated apheresis. In blood centers, we use apheresis technology to collect red blood cells, as well as components that meet Connecticut's definition of plasma apheresis, including plasma platelets, white blood cells, and blood progenitor cells. This change would help clarify that the method of collection is not what differentiates blood from source plasma centers, rather, it's the intended use of the plasma product. In paragraph B, we recommend eliminating the list of standards the state requires to be included in regulation. By eliminating this list, it allows you to be flexible to establish regulations only as needed to supplement, but not duplicate existing federal requirements. Both blood and plasma collectors are already subject to robust federal regulations that are strictly enforced. Layering on state-level requirements that mirror those of FDA and CMS don't add value. And imposing state requirements that differ from those of the federal government makes it difficult and more costly for our organizations to operate effectively across multiple states. So unless the state identifies an issue that one has been overlooked by the feds and two poses a clear risk for blood donors and transfusion recipients, we urge you to limit your requirements to just those necessary to establish and manage the licensing and inspection program itself. We ask that Connecticut statutes simply refer to federal requirements for the details of how to safely collect blood and plasma. In paragraphs C through F, the word facility appears to refer to a physical location in some paragraphs and to an organizational entity in others. This is important to our understanding of the state's intent, whether it's to issue a separate license for each physical location or to issue a single license to an organization that operates at multiple locations under the same management, processing, and staffing. For efficiency sake, we urge the state to consider licensing at the organizational entity level. And then each of its locations could be registered under that license and subject to inspection. We believe these suggestions will result in statutes so efficient and clear while maintaining a focus on public health and safety. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Betsy Jet. And I just want to say, in this, in Rep. Clarida Stitria fashion, did you submit your written testimony? I've not been able-
Yes, yes, I did.
Wonderful, because you had a lot of very helpful information. I know it's late, but I just want to take a moment to personally thank you. I joined my husband in New York City at the New York Blood Center on Valentine's Day. As a blood donor, he was able to meet, he and other donors were able to meet with a person who had been receiving their blood. And I just had a very different experience of what that means. I want to thank you for that. I also want to ask a question, because I know in conversation that day at the Blood Center, we talked about double red blood cell donations. And though I know that's not the specifics of this bill, this is something that I wanted to bring up here at the hearing and ask if you knew anything about the difference in New York versus Connecticut with the double red blood cell donations opportunity. Are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, that's a specific type of collection where we don't have good clarity. The current approach, there's a separation between if you collect whole blood versus apheresis. And apheresis, the double red cell is an apheresis technology that is actually very safe. We even collect high school students with that technology. But in Connecticut, we, blood centers have stopped doing apheresis in most cases because of the outdated regulations. And that's why we're here today to talk about them. The requirement to have a physician on site during plasma apheresis collections means we can't collect- Plasma pharesis collections means we can't collect playlists in the state of Connecticut. So all the playlists that are transfused in your state come from blood donors in New York and other surrounding states. Um, that the double red cells, it's. It's, there's always a little bit of a disconnect with the Department of Health of whether they're. What the requirements are for that in terms of um physician or are in oversight, but uh. So we, that's one of the reasons we're asking the the new statutes to be a little bit more clear and. Separate what source plasma from a blood center that also does apheresis procedures.
Thank you for translating. So in other words, what you've had recommended in A one with respect to apheresis would actually cover the question that I'm asking, which.
Yeah.
That Representative Foster had brought to our attention. So was that a yes? I'm sorry, I didn't let you answer.
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, I want to thank you for spending your time here uh with us today and for your life-saving work as well.
Thank you.
Next on the list, I believe we have Dawn Gagliardi. Who's with us online?
There you are. Yes, hi. Thank you for having me, Senator Anwar, Representative McCarthy Vehi. Um, and the distinguished members of the Public Health Committee. Um, thank you for allowing me to testify on behalf of House Bill six eight one nine. An act concerning lactation consultants. Um, my name is Dawn Gagliardi. I'm a West Hartford resident. I'm an attorney, a real estate agent, but today I'm just here as a mother. Um, I always thought breastfeeding would be super easy for me, and it turns out it really wasn't. Um, after I had my first daughter, I had a lot of issues. I had um. An emergency C-section, which caused edema of my nipples. I am an over producer, which also means that um the letdown is very strong and caused a lot of issues for my baby. Uh, my baby had tongue tie and lip tie. And um had colic and reflux. So there were just a lot of things going on that I'd never anticipated. And I had a great lactation consultant in the hospital before I went home, but once I got home. You know, I really, I I wouldn't have had the support I needed had I not had access to an international board certified lactation consultant. Um, and this was something that, you know, really was a game changer for me. I needed to talk to her almost every day. I needed her support with so many things and, you know, because of that, I was able to breastfeed my first daughter. For almost two years. Um, fast forward to now, I just had a baby uh two months ago, and you know, this is my third child. I thought this would be easy. I've breastfed two other kids. But you know, there's challenges with with every child. And again, I had access to a, you know, an IBCLC. Um, and because of that, you know, now I'm successfully breastfeeding him. I'm able to pump and provide him with milk. Um, at the same time as breastfeeding. So i- it's really been such a game changer for me and. You know, to think that women or families uh who rely on Medicaid. Are not able to get that and wouldn't have access to that is really, it's just a bad, bad feeling for me because I. I can't imagine not having access for that, you know, just. It's such an integral part of what, you know, being a mother is, being a provider is, being able to make food for your baby. And not to mention um the formula shortage that we had, you know, last year. And just the outrageous prices of formula in general, you know. Women who are on Medicaid would not be able to afford formula, but they're not getting, you know, the access to the support. From an IBCLC that I think they really need. So um, I really appreciate you letting me testify today. It's also my first time testifying and. Um, you know, this is just such a. Such a topic that's close to my heart, and I just really wanted to uh share my experience. So thank you.
Ms. Gagliardi, thank you so much. It's wonderful to have so many first time testifiers with us here today. And you did a wonderful job, and I I just want to underscore. What you said, there are challenges with every child, and as a fellow mom, I couldn't agree more. And I want to thank you for sharing your challenges and in an effort to help. Make some of those struggles that other parents have a little easier. Any comments or questions from? Members of the body? Thank you very much. Have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thanks, you too.
Next up, we have uh Kristen Winters. Okay, oh, there.
Hi, hello, everybody. Thank you for your perseverance tonight. Um, you guys have had a long day. Um, thank you to Senator Anwar as well as you, uh Representative McCarthy Vehi. My name is Kristen Winters. Um, I represent the Connecticut Podiatric Medical Association. Um, I've been in practice in the state of Connecticut for twenty three years. Uh, I've enjoyed the privilege of practicing here in Connecticut. Um, I also did my residency here at St. Francis Hospital. And I I run a private practice here in Enfield and in South Windsor. And I'm a fellow of the American College of Foot and Ankle Surgeons. So thank you again for having me. I'm going to be as brief as I can. I know it's been a long day. Um, so this is also my first time testifying as well. Um, so thank you again. So with regards to the two raised bill, I have uh to discuss with you folks tonight. Uh, ten sixteen, um, just with reference to that, I've offered written testimony uh regarding title protection for us. Uh, as podiatric providers, we are uh podiatric doctors, and we refer to ourselves as podiatry physicians for years and for decades. So we're hoping that we maintain this privilege to uh refer to ourselves as uh podiatric physicians as we have. Uh, under our Practice Act for years. And as it relates to uh uh Bill ten sixteen, we we oppose. Uh, the bill, but we feel it's unnecessary, and we oppose um having uh the requirement to wear badges in our office. I I am, I'm closely connected to my patients. We, as a podiatric community, are um, we have intimate relationships with patients. Uh, and we are well-connected. We don't feel as though we need. Uh, a badge, uh, an ID, a license number to represent ourselves, as many of my patients know me by first name. Um, so tha- that's our position on on that. Um, with regards to the Bill ten seventy seven, um. We certainly don't want to be excluded with regards to uh protection from frivolous lawsuits. Uh, a- any, any one of us that has has sat here today and that you've guys have listened to, we don't want to be sued, and we certainly want. Equal protection as other uh doctors uh and providers get. We want to be included and not excluded. From uh this protection. Now, this is with reference raised Bill ten uh seventy seven. Um. Uh, hopefully, I was as succinct as I could be. Um, is there any questions um that I can uh take from from uh anyone?
Thank you so much, and we appreciate you sticking with your three minutes. Another first time testifier. Are there questions or comments from members of the body? I think it's a quieter group at this uh point in the evening, and we appreciate your testimony, and we'll certainly take that into consideration as we. Go forward and your work for the people of Connecticut. Have a great.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the time.
Next, we have David Reynolds to be followed by Allison Malerba. Mr. Reynolds, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Just gonna. Take one second here. And it's been a long night for everybody, a long day, especially for the committee. So I'm gonna, I have submitted testimony, but I'll summarize um the best I can. The Catholic Public Affairs Conference represents the Catholic bishops in Connecticut. Uh, in an effort to protect religious freedom in our state, stands strongly opposed to HB sixty eight eighteen, an act concerning patient access. To reproductive health care. This proposed legislation is framed as a bill to protect a woman's ability. To access reproductive health care, even if providing that care is directly contrary to the moral ethical beliefs. Of the healthcare entity or pharmacist expected to provide those services or medications. In reality, this legislation is an attack on by pro-abortion advocates aimed directly at Catholic hospitals. And any individual pharmacist who objects to providing abort abortion inducing medications. HB sixty eight eighteen, in an effort to weaken the oversight and control. Catholic hospitals must maintain over their providers to ensure compliance. With the ethical and religious directives for Catholic health services, under which all Catholic hospitals operate. Other ERDs, Catholic hospitals and their staff are prohibited from performing or being anywhere involved in abortions. Sterilization, certain fertility treatments and and birth control. These directives, however, also stress the quality of care patients should receive. When they are within a Catholic hospital. So Catholic hospitals provide quality care in Connecticut and across and across our nation. Many of the services, the supporters of this legislation. Are concerned about primarily abortion services are not emergency situations and be sat at non-Catholic facilities. I'd like to clarify a few misconceptions that sometime go around. One is that Catholic hospitals in Connecticut have been providing emergency contraception since two thousand and seven. So if a woman is raped or needs a situation, emergency contraception is available at a Catholic hospital. Also, Catholic hospitals do provide. Uh, services for ectopic pregnancies and, as it says in the bill, management of miscarriages. An ectopic pregnancy is not considered an abortion um under Catholic directives. There's a couple other concerns, too. One is the line section in language section two of the proposed bill, which protects what a provider could. Could say if it conflicts with um. The entity that he works for. That section not only affects Catholic hospitals, that section affects all hospitals. And I would refer you to uh the Catholic Hospital Association's uh testimony on that section, which is they're in opposition to. And then language in section three actually allows providers to perform services in conflict. With hospital guidelines or the healthcare entity they work for, and this would significantly impact Catholic hospitals. One of the unanswered questions, whether or not the Catholic hospital would have to provide the facilities. For the function or abortion or or sterilization, whatever the provider is going to do. Sections four and five, of course, directly attacked the religious freedom of pharmacists when it comes to fulfilling prescription. They feel it's immoral.
Excuse me, Mr. Reynolds, but your time is up. Thank you.
I just could wrap up for one second. Um, the language in section four, three places a burden on a pharmacist. Um, to take preemptive steps, which is a failure, and the punishment is to lose his license. I would like to remind the committee that in the Senate Bill ten seventy six, an act concerning aid and dying. A lot of accommodations were made. For providers that they do not have to be involved in the aid and dying process, but in this bill. It seems to be the exact opposite. There's, there's a respect for religious freedom in one bill, but not in this bill. So the conference orders the committee to reject HB sixty eight eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Thanks for your persistence as our second to last testifier today. We appreciate. Hanging in there with us. Have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Allison Malerba. Let's see if I said your name right. Welcome.
You did, and um, thank you for hanging in there till. Almost ten o'clock at night. You guys have had an exceptionally long day. Um, good evening, Senator Anwar, Representative McCarthy and Vehi, McCarthy Vehi, and esteemed members of the Public Health Committee. My name is Allison Malerba, and I'm a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing who provides oral rehabilitation services to infants and toddlers. And their families here in Connecticut. I want to thank you for bringing forward uh proposed Bill sixty eight twenty one, an act concerning education regarding cytomegalovirus. While I support this bill, I'm ultimately supporting something that already exists, and unfortunately, it's not reaching those who need it most. I am hopeful that based on the testimony that you've heard today, there is an opportunity to further expand on this proposed legislation. Specifically, we're um to require more earnest dis- earnest dissemination of information about congenital CMV prevention and intervention. To pregnant mothers, women of childbearing age, and childcare providers, and to implement universal screening for congenital CMV. As you heard, congenital CMV is the most common infectious cause of birth defects of the United States. Roughly one out of two hundred babies is born with congenital CMV. Of those babies born with congenital CMV, one out of five will have long-term health and developmental complications. Women who have a young child under five years old in childcare and childcare providers are at greater risk for congenital CMV. About five to ten times more than the general population. Ask an expecting mother about the prenatal information she received. Or a childcare provider about what was covered in their universal precautions and bloodborne pathogen training. And congenital CMV was likely not included. In addition to it being the most common virus, it is the leading non-genetic cause of hearing loss. It accounts for almost twenty five percent of childhood hearing loss. In Connecticut, we provide targeted screening for congenital CMV for children who do not pass their newborn hearing screening. Which has led to faster intervention and better potential outcomes. However, congenital CMV is an insidious virus. A child can be asymptomatic at birth and develop late onset hearing loss as a result of this diagnosis. Asymptomatic children with congenital CMV at birth are missed, possibly up to ten to fifteen percent. They can lose out on the opportunity for medical intervention as well as timely hearing and language intervention, which we know is paramount to developmental and educational success. For families. Um, this can feel like they're working backwards to determine the cause, like they're behind rather than getting ahead of it. As mentioned by others today, we have a very small window for certain interventions. Over the many years of providing early intervention to families um of children with congenital CMV. I hear the same question from um every one of them. Why was I not given information about this? Information about congenital CMV is not getting to pregnant women. Childcare providers and women of childbearing age in a timely and efficient way. Which affects their ability to make the inform, an informed decision about their health. In recent years, we have seen that increased awareness of precautions lowers risk of transmission for many health conditions. There are many resources available that provide excellent information about CMV prevention and intervention. However, posting information solely on the D page website is not effective um getting to those that need it most. And targeted screening may be missing children at risk for late onset hearing loss and other health complications. New York recently passed a CMV lesson uh prevention education law. And Minnesota just became the first state to pass universal screening for congenital CMV. I'm hopeful that Connecticut can pass similar legislation with your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for. Being here all day and all night with Representative Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to my exceptional colleagues, your patience all day. I promise I'll be quick with Allison. Allison, I just wanted to first thank you for the work that you do. We heard from one of our testifiers earlier. Um, how important you've been in her daughter's life. So that's awesome. Um, to get to see you here, and I appreciate the conversation you've had with me recently. Just wanted to ask one question, and it's specifically about the education side of this. Um, I know that you had shared some data around the effectiveness of these potential educational interventions. Wonder if you can speak to that and also put that in the context of what you've heard. Uh, the data has seen shown about CMV during the time of COVID nineteen, when these other protocols have been in place. So those are, that's the question sort of about on the um, the efficacy of of doing some of these educational interventions you've talked about. Thank you.
Yes, so um, in terms of the latter portion of your question, um, there was a study that was recently put out. I am happy to send it to um. The committee that looked at, I believe it was in Minnesota, actually, they looked at um. COVID nineteen in terms of um incidence and of cases of um congenital cytomegalovirus. And what they ultimately found is that those numbers went down, which was consistent with. What they're finding that children were in childcare centers, children weren't being exposed at high rates. Um. And so there is that study that I'm happy to pass on to you. In terms of the efficacy, I can say anecdotally, as a provider, I've been doing this since two thousand and five. Um, and I know I I see children uh with congenital CMV. I I always have given. We catch them hopefully early on, or unfortunately, they presented with other um risk factors, which has resulted in them. Being diagnosed earlier. That said, I am seeing a faster turnaround time. We're seeing that children are getting antiviral therapy. Um, which once, as a couple of our um panelists earlier mentioned. Once you're out of that window, you do run into a situation where you no longer have certain options. Um, so I can say in terms of that, children that I am seeing who are diagnosed with congenital CMV. Um, are getting antiviral therapies. So we're seeing potentially better outcomes than um without.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that answer and your advocacy and and look forward to keeping in touch as we keep working on this. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Rep. Parker, for your advocacy. And Representative Ryan, who's been working on this issue for a long time.
I I I thank you very much uh for the work you've done. Um, and actually, the questions that Representative Parker asked were comparable to the questions I was going to ask. But again, thank you for your advocacy and the work you've done. With the people who have had these issues, and uh we certainly appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
And truly in all sincerity, Representative Ryan, very much. And truly, in all sincerity, Representative Ryan, very much appreciate the work that you've done and now being continued and built upon by Rep. Parker and others.
That's wonderful.
Thank you so much, Allison, for being here and helping us round out our day. No other questions or comments. We hope you have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you very much. I hope you do as well.
With that, fellow members of the Public Health Committee, our hearing is now adjourned. Have a wonderful evening and safe travels.
Thank you.